Okay, we're gonna call the regular meeting of the City of Bellflower, City Council to order Monday, September 26, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here. May I have everybody arise at this time for the invocation led by Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez and the pledge of allegiance by Lynn Gurecki, our Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director.
Let's bow our head in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life, the gift of family, the gift of community, especially the City of Bellflower. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We are so blessed. As we meet tonight, please remember those who serve the city. We thank our staff for their service to our great city. We thank our members of our military and our first responders, police, fire, and paramedics for keeping us safe. Please remember those who are homeless, who are hungry, who are sick, who are unemployed, or otherwise struggling. As we meet tonight to discuss the important business of the city, please guide us, enlighten us, so we'll make the best judgment for the sake of our city. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Place your right hand over your heart, address the flag, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on into City Council announcements. I'll start. The 2022 Bellflower State of the City presentation will be held next Thursday, October 6th, at 11:30 AM at our very own main event center. The State of the City presentation provides an overview and update on city's recent accomplishments and future goals. I am excited to share that amazing process that we've had this past year and what is to come. For more information regarding the event, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2267. Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Bellflower Volunteer Center is now coordinating the holiday food and toy drive for our local families in need. For Thanksgiving, they are seeking canned goods and gift cards. For Christmas, they're seeking canned goods, gift cards, and gifts for children. Gifts can be dropped off at the volunteer center or purchased online using the Amazon wishlist. Monetary donations are always welcome and appreciated during this time of the year. Donations are due by November 1st. For more information, please contact 562-804-1424, extension 2331, or email mnavarro@bellflower.org. That's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santa Inez. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce will be hosting its monthly morning mingle tomorrow, Tuesday, September 27th, from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. The Chamber is also hosting its Tree or Tree on the Boulevard event Friday, October 28th, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the Town Center Plaza. For more information, please contact the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at 562-867-1744. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Sanchez. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are you a Bellflower business owner or operator who has something special to celebrate? Have you received an award preparing for a special event or recently remodeled? If so, share your news with the city's Economic Development Department by emailing economic-dev@bellflower.org. In addition to being featured in the e-citizen, the Economic Development Department will begin a small business spotlight every month. Business owners will receive a one-minute feature video to appear on cable channel 36, the city website, and social media. To apply for the spotlight special, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2249. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. Look at these. You know, Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board is providing up to 500 hours of work experience or vocational training, resume assistance, cover letter assistance, and financial support for tools, transportation, et cetera. To be eligible, the applicant must be 14, that's hopefully correct, they're gonna start them young, to 24 years old, and be able to work in Cerritos and surrounding cities. To find out if you're eligible, please call 562-484-5027, or 562-484-5000. To learn more about their program, please visit their website at www.selacwdb.com. All right? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna have a presentation by the Compton College presentation, and we have Keith and Juanita from Compton College to provide an informational update on Compton College. And when you're ready, the floor is yours. You're welcome. Make yourself comfortable.
Okay, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, staff, and residents of Bellflower. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present with, to present you guys tonight. Again, my name is Juanita Doplinmore. I'm the Board of Trustee for Compton Community College, Area 4, along with myself, Dr. Keith Curry.
And I'm the President and CEO of Compton College.
Thank you. So we'll just jump right in. So here, this is a, we'll just go ahead and get started. Back in May of 2019, we had our former First Lady, Michelle Obama. She attended a college signing day on our campus. We're real excited about that, and that's like one of my favorite slides. Next slide. Just to give you an overview of Compton College at a glance, Compton Community College is the 114th California Community College and achieved, re-achieved its re-accreditation in June 7th of 2017. The Compton Community College serves the following cities: Compton, Lynwood, Paramount, Willbrook, as well as portions of Athens, Bellflower, Carson, Downey, Dominguez, Lakewood, North Long Beach, and South Gate. Currently, we offer 41 certificate programs, 42 degree programs, and for our 2020, 2021 stats, our student population was 6,621 students. The next slide continuing on, we offer 456 degrees that were awarded in 2021. We have 15 certificate awards that were also in that same year. We had 184 associates degree for transfer students that were awarded in 2021. Some of the most popular programs, of course, is business administration, administration of justice, childhood education, nursing, psychology, and of course, our certificate programs that we're very proud of is air conditioning and refrigeration, auto collision, repair, and painting, automotive technology, childhood education, cosmetology, as well as the liberal studies. And this spring, we held our first post-COVID in-person graduation at Dignity Health in Carson, and that was a graduating class of those students for 2020, '21, as well as '22. Continuing at a glance, our budget is $74.2 million, the beginning revenue. The campus sits on 88 acres. We have 229 full-time and part-time staff, and our district serves 307,229 residents.
So if you get a check, just our budget, our budget information, which is publicly available, you get to see what our beginning balance was for the previous year and what our revenues for the state were for this year. We're a fiscally sound organization, providing services within our community and serving residents of Bellflower. Just to give you a look at our enrollment, and actually, our enrollment has been declining due to our partnership with El Camino College ending in 2019, and then COVID happened. And so right now, our goal is to try to build back our enrollment for our institution. But if you look at our numbers right now, as of today, actually last Friday, our numbers were 0.7, which is our full-time equivalent student funding from the state of California. We're actually, as of today, we're at 0.1. So this will be the year that we will be similar to where we were last year, which is really good for our campus and our, and our organization. Just to give you a sense of our demographics of our student population, you can see that Compton majority serves Latinx individuals, and then also African, Black and/or African-American students as well. And you can see, what's interesting about our data, if you look at 1516 compared to 2020, 2021, you see Latinx or Latino population continue to increase as the African, Black and African-American population decline. And that's similar to what's happening with the census data. Just to give you a sense of some of our construction, we've been doing a lot of work. We just opened in the fall of 2020. In the fall of 2021, we opened a $21.1 million state-of-the-art instructional building. We're in construction right now on a $25.2 million student services building. I actually had the opportunity to walk that building today. We're scheduled to be completed this fall with the opening of January 1 of 2023, but it will be done this fall semester. We also have another instructional building, number two, which is a $25.6 million project, which will be done in the winter of 2023. And then we have future projects. We have a $45.6 million physical education complex that also includes a swimming pool on our campus as well. So we're really excited about this project. It's at, right now, it's currently at the Division of State Architects for approval as relates to the architecture for the project. Our goal is to begin construction sometime this year. And then we have another $13.4 million visual and performing arts complex, which was currently in design, and this would be open for our students and also our community. So we're really excited about the construction projects. And the last piece of construction projects, we received $80 million from the state for a new student housing facility for 250 beds. We'll be the first community college in LA County that will have student housing.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Curry. And continuing on with some of the basic needs that we provide for the students post-COVID, this, to ensure a safe return to students, safe return to in-person instruction, we offered a vaccination incentive of $350 for students to, to return to campus. We also have our St. John's Health Center, which is on campus, which provided vaccination and also mental and health and wellness for students upon their return. Next slide. On this slide right here, you see the grant distribution. This is some of the COVID-19 health, health education, and emergency aid that was in, that was dispersed to students, as you can see, starting in spring of 2020, 2020, continuing on to spring of 2022.
And just to add to the slide, this year, we're giving away close to $3.7 million in emergency aid to students, this year alone.
Okay, thank you. And continuing on to address some of the, the housing and food insecurities, what Dr. Curry mentioned earlier, with the construction for the on-campus housing for students, how we are addressing the food insecurity for students is that we have what is called Every Table, which provides a meal for students, each student on campus. They can, they are eligible to receive up to one meal a day, and for those students that are attending instruction online, they can also have a meal delivered to their home. We're also having food delivery as well as partnering with the LA County Food Bank for few, for food distributions as well as food pantries. Next slide, okay. Steps to enrollment, we have, currently, we have virtual and in-person enrollment that is taking place this fall, and the steps to enrollment, if you scan the QR code, first is to apply for admissions, which we encourage all of the students to do. Seek the financial aid and funding that's available for students. Students will also receive an orientation. There's also an educational plan review with their counselors to ensure their success and make sure that they're on a path for success as they return to two years in person, and also if those students are looking to transfer. And of course, the last step would be to register for in classes, and that's something that we encourage all of the students to do and take part in. On the next slide is our Oliver W. Connor Promise, California College Promise Program, but for us, it's by the name of Oliver W. Connors. And Oliver W. Connors was an alumni, and the institution received a grant, or he left in his will, to Compton College. So as, out of respect to him and his love for the college, we named our California College Promise Program after him. And of course, that is for students that are graduating from our local high schools, they automatically get immediate enrollment into our two-year program, and there's just some of the, if you go to the next slide, Dr. Curry, some of the benefits to that. The students, their enrollment fees, whether they are eligible for a Pell Grant or other aids, and this two-year program is eligible to students that participate and take up to 71 units with transferring. And then, of course, at that time, you can, the students can tap into some of the additional financial aid that's available to students through the state. Dr. Curry, would you like to add to anything on that?
No.
Okay, next slide is, of course, just continuing on with this, you can see the breakdown and the savings for students that enroll and participate in the College Promise Program versus the, the semester fees for books, tuition, and just the, the true cost of attendance. And I believe that that funding that you see there, that is, what the out-of-pocket cost for the 2016 that you see off to the right, that is the health and student government fees that the students would have to pay. Next slide, Dr. Curry. Okay, and last, before we can open it up to questions, is of course, again, our eight-week classes begin October 15th, so we are accepting enrollment, whether virtual or in-person, for students. And that is all we have. We can open up to any questions.
What a good presentation. Any questions? Juanita or Kevin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Can you go back again about the budget? Is it 43 million? Did I remember correctly?
42.3, I believe. I must have misspoke a little bit, I'm sorry.
It's about 40 million, right?
Oh, no, that was a 74, but...
So it's 74 million, which includes our unrestricted and our restricted dollars as well.
And the population is about 6,000 students right now?
Yes, and yes, correct.
I'm just kind of extrapolating the numbers while you were talking. It's about $10,000, $11,000 per student?
That we see, it's state funding.
State funding.
So our, and we didn't get into this, it's a little bit, a little bit complex, but I can do it in a quick second. So our funding from the state is protected due to COVID-19, but more so about our separation with El Camino College. So we're, we have a funding floor. So basically, we're funded for a certain number of students, regardless of how many students we have on campus, and that goes through 2025, 2026. And that's legislation that we worked on in 2017.
So if we can run down, just in global terms, so we get funding for about $11,000 per student from the state?
It's actually, when you look at the funding, it's about $6,500 per student, per full-time equivalent student.
The reason I'm bringing this up is because, you know, I'm not trying to compare this, but we're spending more money for prison compared to the students. I mean, it's just 6,000 versus, I think we're spending about $100,000 per inmate. So this just disparity, it just kind of irritates me, that we're not, we're not investing in our kids enough to get them educated. That's, that's all my point. And can you, Dr. Curry, can you educate me here, when you said earlier that, or Ms. Doplinmore, about Compton College serving parts of Bellflower?
Yes.
Can you educate me on that? I mean...
Okay, so I'm in, so I'm in North Long Beach, so my particular area for Bellflower are the students that are, we, the residents consider, or they refer to them as southern, right? So we're on the southern side. So Bellflower, that's on the, on the south side of the 91 freeway, right there between North Long Beach, Lakewood, and Bellflower, right? So all of those students. So that pocket of students right there. And then there's also another section of students on the other side, on the northern side of, of the district of Bellflower, that is served by Downey Unified School District. So you have multiple school districts that you, for your residents, depending on what side of the, of the city they're on. Is that correct?
Because I think for the most part, most of the residents of Bellflower are served by Cerritos College.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was speaking of high school, but yes, also for my footprint, my footprint in north, in north, in south Bellflower, I'm sorry, the footprint is for Compton Community College.
Right, on the south side.
So your city has two community college districts, just like the city of Long Beach. So my portion, of course, is Compton, and then the majority of Long Beach is served by Long Beach Unified School District.
Ah, I see.
So you have a benefit there.
Right. So is the funding similar to, let's say, the school district where you get by, based on average daily attendance?
We are funded on full-time equivalent students. So basically, the short and sweet part of this is basically looking at student enrollment. So a full-time equivalent student is more so taking 12 units. So you might have multiple students who are taking three units, one class. If you have multiple students taking three, one, three-unit courses equals 12, that's one full-time equivalent student. And so for one full-time equivalent student, we get about $6,500 full-time equivalent student funding from the state of California.
Oh, I see. And then you also mentioned about, and I just wanted to put the plug here, you mentioned about Every Table?
Yes.
We have Every Table in Bellflower.
Yes.
It's on the northwest corner of Bellflower and Alondra.
Bellflower and Alondra.
So we're averaging about 420 meals per day, and it also includes our employees, and we have, we are funding this program for the next three years.
And by the way, I'm very impressed with your program, especially nursing, because I have friends who went to your nursing school, and they were very well-educated. So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
And finally, can you explain to me the, the College Promise Program? Is it only for one year or for the whole?
It's...
For two years?
It's for two years up to 71 credit units, right?
It's for two, it's a two-year program that's for students, we want to make sure they get up to 70 units, but it's a two-year program, free, free college. But you also understand when you talk about free college, we also want to look at the other expenses that students have. Like, we're paying for their tuition, but there's also other expenses, and that's why we do a lot of work in basic needs to make sure the students have that support regardless of housing and food insecurity.
So what are the expectations of the student to kind of maintain that on, let's say, on their second year? Do they have to maintain some kind of grade point average, or?
It's not based off a grade point average, but it's based off of the number of units they take and also fill out the application during their freshman, during their, prior to their freshman year or during their freshman year.
Okay.
Or their first year, say it that way.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamada, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yes, hello.
Hi, Juanita. Again, we know each other, so, but also, again, Dr. Curry, again, welcome. Yeah, this, this question about, you know, service area has always intrigued me, because Bellflower, I believe, could be served by four, four college districts, actually, possibly the Compton, and the, some of the west side and south, south side, Cerritos, of course. I know a lot of kids that go to Long Beach City College, and then the kids in the north that go to Downey Unified Schools maybe go to Rio Hondo, the possibilities. So again, you know, thank you for being here. Again, you know, this one is always, I'm wondering how the city got divided up like that, and, and, but it's, again, you know, again, opportunities, and I just want to thank you for being here and, you know, providing this information. Hopefully, we could get the other college districts out here too, to, to convey their, you know, again, opportunities that will, you know, benefit our kids here in town. So again, thank you for all you're doing, and, you know, best on, on those endeavors, and, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of our kids. Yeah, I think there's a lot of us who are really stepping up to, you know, address the needs.
Yes, well, thank you, Councilmember.
Again, thank you.
Great. No further questions? Oh, Victor, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, sorry about that. Just a question came up. Well, first off, welcome, and thank you for being here. Just a quick question regarding, do you currently, does Compton Community College currently have a partnership with Bellflower Unified School District?
No, we do not, but I think that's something that we need to look into as we move forward, especially for the portion that we serve.
Perfect. And maybe Mr. Hamada can, can connect that, connect those dots.
We're trying. Yeah, it's, again, I, I think I was the one that encouraged this start, and again, again, after meeting Juanita and, and, you know, talking about it more, and just seeing the opportunities. I think, again, this, this, this community needs, needs to have at least that on the table, at least as an option. So, and again, because we get carved up here, you know, some of the students can't make it, you know, between the, again, other districts, but again, there's an opportunity at, at Compton College, and we definitely want the kids to take advantage of it.
And we will follow back up regards to the Bellflower Unified School District, but I, one thing I'd throw out there as, as a recommendation, if you're interested in coming to see the campus, the campus is beautiful. If you're interested in coming to the campus, go on a tour. Including our packet is our, my business card, so we set you up with a campus tour, and you try to every table at Compton College as well on your campus tour. But it's a beautiful campus, and the construction, you don't see too many community colleges having this much construction that's basically funded by the state of California. And so the state of California has invested a lot of money into Compton College and Compton Community College District because of the good work that we have been doing over the last couple of years. And so without trustee Doplinmore, I don't think we'd be where we're at now, and bridging this connection today with Bell, with the City of Bellflower is, is helpful. If you have any other suggestions of how we can increase enrollment, or any other ideas, suggestions about programs, please let us know. We're always open to new ideas.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
I got a question. Yes, currently, how many Bellflower students do you have enrolled in your college?
You know, I don't know that answer to that question, and I'm gonna have to, I was thinking about that on the way here today, because our data for our trustee area number four is disaggregated by the whole area, but not by the ZIP code. So what I would be able to get back to tomorrow is by your ZIP codes, how many students are enrolled at the Compton College?
Be interested to know.
For the last five years.
So we have a baseline as we work forward?
Yeah. So I will send you a copy of the, our report card that we have for trustee area four, but also we're gonna break down the data for Bell, the City of Bellflower for the last five years.
No, I was especially interested in the courses you offer, hands-on training, air conditioning, auto body, fender, plumbing, electrical, all that, things are sometimes put aside, but it looks like you've provided a place for them, and it's very important.
Thank you.
Now, it, it used to be, and I assume it's the same deal now, even though you live in Bellflower, you can elect to go to any junior college in the area, isn't that true?
Correct.
All right.
Students have, they have open access, community college is an open access institution, but no, no other community college is offering what we're offering. We talk about free Wi-Fi, laptops, Wi-Fi hotspots, food every single day, they're not offering the amount of emergency aid that we're providing to our students. Compton College is at the forefront as relates to providing support for our students, and those resources have been allocated for that. And so our, our goal is for you to help us regards to encouraging, telling students more about Compton College, but also about the resources. But we will provide that data as well by tomorrow.
And it appears, or it sounds as though you even provide food service for the employees, staff?
Correct. All the employees and students are able to eat every single day, Monday through Thursday is one of our, our signature programs, because we have been able to find the niche, and I mean niche, is, and most colleges have not been able to do that, of how you can be able to provide food every day, but it's our partnership with Every Table, where we're able, we have a sweet spot regards to the amount it costs per meal, and, and employees and students have options, and every day, students are in there picking up their meal, their free meal each day. But it's, that's how you address housing, food insecurity, is by really attacking the problem and making sure that's available to our students.
You mentioned a couple of times a relationship with El Camino College that had changed. Can you explain to me what changed?
So just for, for history and for some history buffs that are, that are in the room, is that Compton College was the first community college, Compton Community College was the first community college in the history of California, community colleges, who accreditation was revoked in 2005. And so from that revoke, we got into a partnership in 2006 with El Camino College to provide educational services at our campus. We became accredited again in 2017, and we separated from El Camino College in 2019. The reason why that's significant is that we anticipated that we're gonna have a decline in enrollment due to the transition from El Camino College in 2019. However, we did not predict the COVID-19 pandemic. So we had a double whammy, as they would say, regards to our decline in enrollment, because we already knew we were gonna have decline in enrollment because of partnership, and then we had decline enrollment due to COVID-19.
So did the diplomas read El Camino College? Or did they read Compton College?
At, at that time, it read El Camino College, and now they read Compton College.
And all the courses you take, if I take a course at your institution, that will put me in the right place so that I can go on to a four-year college?
Yep. We are accredited college, and there, the courses and units that students complete are able to be on their transcript and are transferable to four-year colleges and universities.
Do you give letter grades or pass/fail?
We, in actuality, we give letter grades, however, some courses do have pass/fail option.
Okay. And you're on semesters or on quarters?
We're on semesters, however, in our semester, we have a 16-week courses that are offered, we have 14-week courses, we have 12-week courses, we also have eight-week courses that are offered throughout the semester. So we have different section, different opportunities throughout the semester. So we have different section, different, um, opportunities throughout the semester for students to take courses either in either one of those, uh, terms.
Historically, Compton College always fielded great teams, athletic teams. You didn't make any mention of that tonight. Do you still have all those great programs?
Yeah, we actually do have all those programs, and I'm really excited about our football team. Uh, we're two and two this year. Uh, we want, we had a two-game winning streak, and then we just lost this past weekend at West LA College. But we have a plethora of sports that are offered, and since two thousand and ten, we have added women's volleyball. We have also added women's soccer and also women's softball. So we've been adding sports as we move forward, and we're one of the first community college who has an esports facility, which is a whole nother presentation regards to the movement as it relates to esports. But we have an esports facility on our campus.
With the new pool coming, I suspect you're gonna have a swim team.
Uh, not just swim, we also got individuals asking for water polo.
Oh, okay, wow.
And learn to swim during the summer.
Oh, you're gonna ask that availability too?
That's my request.
For the community?
Yes, for the community.
Perfect. Well, thank you for answering all my questions. You, it's a treat to have you here this evening, and I think we're all impressed with what you're offering there, because we don't know unless you tell us.
Yes.
But we're gonna, like Mr. Hamada said, I think that, uh, we need to partner with you on getting some of our students that are graduating from Bellflower and Mayfair and the surrounding areas to come to your institution and find out what a true gift it is.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you. Great presentation. Okay, public comments, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, state your, be recognized by the mayor and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Larry Wehage. I will not need three minutes. Uh, I just want to thank you for your support, allowing the Lions Club to coordinate with the city to put on another great car show that we just had this past Saturday. Uh, it was well-attended, and I want to thank all the city council for showing up, being a part of it. Uh, we are set up for next year, October seventh. I've already got people locked in for spots next year. They are, uh, going fast. In fact, the phone call I had earlier was from somebody, uh, regarding the car show. Uh, so I just, again, want to thank you very much for allowing the Noon Lions to, uh, coordinate that with the city staff. Thank you very much.
And we'll look forward to you next year hosting it. Great job.
Yes, sir. Now I gotta go home with my wife.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to, uh, come up?
Mayor, councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Butts, uh, a local person here in, in town. I have a couple items. I still see you got your three-minute nonsense there, which is a slap in the face. But I've got a couple things here, and I would like to know, on this city substation, along with the employees, what purpose does it serve at a cost of over a million dollars a year? And when I had to go over there a couple weeks ago to report, uh, some vandalism, they tell me, here's the phone number, call the Lakewood Sheriff's Department. So what, what, where's, what, why are we throwing over a million dollars a year away on a stupid place like that and been doing it for god knows how long now? It's time to get rid of it. Now, here's the other question, street sweeper. I brought it up before. Why do we pay somebody to follow the street sweeper when you can deal with the street sweeper company and have the camera installed on the vehicle that takes the picture of the thing and sends you, or whoever, the deal to pay, pay the fines instead of paying another idiot that we have to hire, which is a waste of money? Now, here's another item, and it has to do with code enforcement. I was told they work on the weekends sometimes, but I haven't seen it. Uh, there's so many permits and business licenses never taken out, 'cause everything done on the, on the weekend. I brought this up several times before, and I even have a picture this time of a very prominent person here, uh, in back of, in back of his building, while they're putting a brand-new roof on it, Mr. Coops, on Saturday and Sunday of the seventeenth.
So they're on Harvard Street?
No permit, no license, no nothing.
Harvard Street?
Now, our, our grand old code enforcement people, they work so hard. It's time to get rid of them and outsource that, too. So much money is being wasted and nothing being done by the laziness of a lot of employees that aren't needed. It's time to outsource. I, I turned this in over, today I stopped down here, but this is right in back of your place, Dan.
I, what, on, uh?
I'm sitting there on a Saturday and Sunday watching them do it. Real slap in the face, but it's not your fault.
Well, thank you for not paying me, but I did put the roof on.
It's not your fault at all. It's, it's the employees that we have here, they don't do nothing. So thank you for your time, and I, I'll, I'll give you my eleven seconds.
All right.
Thank you, John. Anybody else wishing to, uh, speak on anything?
Good, good evening, guys. Uh, my name is Townsend. Actually, I've just bought a property in Bellflower, hoping to do business. But the thing is, uh, you guys, I got a letter here saying that there's a new development happening on seven, seventeen-six-one-seven, Bellflower, and...
What address, seventeen?
No, this letter says that this, this new property is gonna be built at seventeen-six-one-seventh in Bellflower. My address is, uh...
You got a, a radius thing, you were within so many feet?
Yes, sir.
I noticed, okay.
So I just bought a property on seven, seventeen-eight-twenty. I'm a very small business person. I've been saving up my money for twenty years to buy a commercial property. I just ended up buying it. Now, I can't even get a permit. I came here to get a demo permit. They don't even offer demo permit. They give me such a hard time, it's just very hard. So I don't know what to do with this. So you guys can guide me to the right place, who I need to talk to?
I'm, I'm confused.
I think what's happening, he's bought a building, he wants to demo the building, he's struggling to get a demo permit. We could solve that, and if we just talk to Travis afterwards.
I mean, it's your building, and you pull a permit to...
No, I, I did come here many times, and the people are really nice, but they really don't want to help. And I tried to do everywhere I could.
Do you have something, uh, plans for a new building there?
No, I do not have, uh, I just did a demo inside. So I just did a demo inside, but they say you need a demo permit, so I came here to get a demo permit.
Oh, you're not demoing the building, you're just doing demo on the inside?
Yes, sir.
Got it.
So now, I bought this property in July, it's still now, they locked it, so I can't even have access to my own building, like, to do anything. They say you're not allowed to, or I get cited for that.
Yeah. I think there's other things involved, like asbestos and stuff like that, but you, you need to have a plan, though.
Yeah, we can, right.
Yeah, I did have a plan. I had an engineer come here, too, that, so they defined them, too.
So get with, uh, Travis here.
Okay.
And he'll, uh, have a little sidebar with you, and we'll see what we can do. Anybody else wishing? Talk about anything? Okay, let's move on. Item seven A, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is the first public hearing tonight. It's consideration of possible action, conduct public hearing to receive comments on the fiscal two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two consolidated annual performance evaluation report, or CAPR, and adopt resolution number twenty-dash, twenty-two-dash-fifty-seven, a resolution authorized city manager to submit the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-two consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, or CAPR, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And we have two folks making staff report tonight. It's Jim Delonge, who will introduce Aknessa for you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Carl, uh, because of, uh, my membership for the Board of Directors of Kingdom Causes, is there any reason that would prevent me from participating with the CAPR? Because there's some, see, uh, CDBG funding that goes...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the council has a separate code of conduct, which is separate and apart from the legal conflicts. But I do believe the code of conduct requires you to recuse yourself if you're on one of the nonprofit boards that may be affected by the funding with regard to this.
And I am, so, Mr. Mayor, I will recuse myself.
Understandable.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, with that note, um, now I'm kinda curious if I should be recusing myself, too, for some, for serving on some of the, uh, of these nonprofits. I don't believe any funding has been dispersed yet, but since I serve...
If, if you're not, if you're on, serving on the board, again, the city council adopted a resolution requiring members of the city council that served on a separate nonprofit corporation board that may be affected by funding provided by the city to recuse themselves.
Yeah, so I'll do the same.
Or, or employed?
Or employed.
Gotcha, okay. All right, let the record reflect that Councilmember Sanchez and Councilmember Hamada are conflicted out of item seven A. Okay, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Delonge, go ahead, or Mr. Stewart. Forgot where I was.
Thank you, Ms... Good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor and members of the remaining city council. Um, Aknessa Ananekin is going to present this, uh, the staff, she, Carla, and finance staff have been working on this for a few months now and getting this all set for you, so I'm gonna turn it over to her.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Um, the city is conducting a public hearing to review and receive public comment on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two consolidated annual performance evaluation report, also known as the CAPR. Um, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that the city annually submit a CAPR, which summarizes the activities and expenditures through, um, supported through the use of community development block grant and home investment partnership funds. Um, CDBG funds in particular are meant to improve living environments and promote economic development through job creation and services. The funds must assist low-income persons, particularly in blighted areas. Last year, HUD allocated approximately nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in CDBG funds towards such activities. The activities included the Fair Housing Foundation, which provided their services to hundred, to two hundred and seven Bellflower residents; Kingdom Causes Bellflower Good Soils Program, which employed thirty residents; the Volunteer Center, which added a total of fifteen new adult and student volunteers that served and benefited over fourteen hundred persons. CDBG also partially funds the city's code enforcement activities, specifically in CDBG-eligible tracts. Last year, there were four hundred and thirty-nine code enforcement cases in these tracts. Also, a majority of CDBG funds are used to, for Section one oh eight loan repayment. Um, this was a loan, a twenty-year loan, a twenty-year, seven million dollar loan, excuse me, taken out in two thousand and four to rebuild blighted areas and promote economic development in the downtown area. The city is obligated to make annual payments using CDBG funds through the year two thousand and twenty-four. The city also uses CDBG funds to pay for program administration and planning costs to ensure HUD regulations are met. And lastly, the city also allocated CDBG funds for a small business assistance program, which was carried over into this current fiscal year. In all, approximately eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars of CDBG funds were expended last fiscal year. In addition to regular CDBG funds, the city also received supplemental CDBG CV coronavirus funds to prepare, prevent, and respond to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Bellflower received two rounds of CV funding totaling one point one eight eight million dollars. The city funded an emergency rental relief program, which assisted sixty-four Bellflower residents. In addition, CV funds were also allocated to food insecurity programs, including a homeless shelter meal program, which was able to assist over one hundred persons with food, as well as a food insecurity program, which assisted fifteen families with bi- bi-weekly grocery pickup. The city has also allocated CV funds to a youth family senior services program and a business grant program. These additional programs are currently in process of starting up. CV funds are expected to be fully exhausted by year two thousand and twenty-three. The city is also using CDBG CV funds to pay for, to pay for program administration. The city, um, excuse me, on a different note, the city also receives home funds from HUD. Home is meant to retain and increase affordable housing stock for renters and owners in the city of Bellflower. Last fiscal year, the city received approximately three hundred and fifty-nine thousand in home funds. The home funds are allocated towards certain housing programs throughout the city, the first being the housing rehabilitation program. A total of five rehabilitation projects were completed last fiscal year. Home funds are also used for program planning and administrative costs. Lastly, under the home regulations, at least fifteen percent of the home funds must be set aside for a project led by a community housing development organization, also known as a CHODO. The CHODO line item has been carried over to the next fiscal year in order to build up the CHODO project fund to make a meaningful contribution to an affordable housing project. CHODO funds must be committed by year two thousand and twenty-four, or a portion of the CHODO funds must be committed by year two thousand and twenty-four. In total, approximately one hundred and eighty-four thousand was spent from the home funds last year. These are the primary accomplishments of the city's CDBG, CDBG CV, and home programs this past fiscal year. The CAPR has been available on the city's website from September twelfth through today, and the public notice was published in the Wave newspaper. Following HUD's review and approval, the CAPR will be finalized and posted on the city's website. Our recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt resolution number twenty-two-dash-fifty-seven, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. That completes my presentation. If staff has any questions?
Any questions to, no, any questions to staff?
The account?
The numbers guy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, can you show, show the, uh, can you go back to the, I think, the second chart?
The, the home funds.
The home funds.
This one?
No, the, the second, uh, from, from the first one, uh, before this. Oh, no, no, that's the one, that's the one.
This is the one, okay.
Uh, this is quite impressive to me in terms of what, uh, well, thank you for the presentation. When I was looking at what the achievement versus the goal, i- it is quite impressive. So let me start with that, because if you look at the numbers, um, you, the, the city accomplished three times more than the goal overall. I'm just trying to oversimplify it. So a couple of questions here, on the, the business assistance program. I thought we had something already in place for that, didn't we?
Yes.
We're assuming zero.
Correct, but we did have some, uh, business assistance left over from the previous round. So we're rolling it over, uh, there's going to be, uh, some business assistance for the Bellflower Center?
No, but when I'm looking at the, the zero, didn't we achieve something?
No, we haven't, we haven't given the grants for the Bellflower Center yet, yeah.
Oh, okay, because we approved that for the Bellflower Center.
Correct, and they're not ready for them yet, so we're just wait, we're, we're making sure they're ready before we give the grants.
I think we're funding about six of the...
Five.
Five shops?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Hmm, that's interesting. Okay, and the next slide?
Next slide?
There you go, okay. Um, so, well, I guess the same thing with the business, business grant assistance, gonna be similar thing?
Correct, there is, there's, uh, the CV funds are also funding the ten thousand dollar grants for, I think, nine or ten businesses and, uh, two of the Bellflower Center grants. And we haven't, and we're in process on, on the, uh, business grants.
Okay, and, and when is the, when is the deadline to basically, uh, spend, invest the money?
Two thousand and twenty-three for CV funds?
We have three years from the date that the funds were, um, agreements were signed from HUD, so we have three years to use at least eighty percent, and we have six years in total to use all the funds.
Okay, so we have plenty of time?
We have time.
Okay, all right, very good. And then, uh, and then the, the next slide? Oh, no, go back to that. The, the emergency housing assistance, that's a big chunk of money that is, um, has been spent. Uh, was that through the, um, Kingdom Causes?
No, the emergency housing assistance was rental assistance through our CV funds.
Okay, so you basically, it was done to staff?
Correct.
Okay, okay, all right, very good. And, and the next slide? Okay, so the, the CHODO project, I know we've been talking about this, and they mentioned that the deadline to, to invest the money, I don't want to use the spend, we're not spending, we're investing, uh, it's two thousand and twenty-four.
A portion of the CHODO funds, yes.
What portion of that needs to be?
We have five years for, from the time the funds were first, um, allocated to the city to use them. So every year, so this is funds from two thousand and sixteen, I believe, or two thousand and fifteen, or, I have to, I wrap my, I don't have the number in front of me, I apologize.
So it's kind of a rolling deadline?
It's a rolling thing. It rolls over every year. So there's only a small portion that has to be committed to an activity by a certain date, by two thousand and twenty-four.
So do you have any kind of ideas in the pipeline to kind of, how to invest, because it's a big chunk of money?
It, it is. It's building up over the years, as you can see, and, uh, talk about a permanent... It, it is, it's building up over the years, as you can see, and, uh, talk about a permanent, uh, house, a permanent supportive housing project has been, uh, bantered about, um, recently, uh, but that's the only one at this time.
Okay, all right, all right, so thank you so much, and, uh, and again, it's, um, I, I'm very, I'm very impressed with the, um, with the outcome, with what you have done so far, and I look forward to continuing this, this, uh, this roadmap. Thank you.
Any other question?
Yeah, I've got a, let's follow up on the CHODO money there, one point five. I thought you said it was gonna expire a portion of it, twenty twenty-three, but it's actually twenty twenty-four. So right now, s- some of that money that's shown is twenty twenty-four is when portion of that will wash away unless we spend it?
Correct.
None of that money is in jeopardy cr- currently? Okay, all right, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second the motion?
Motion on the floor and, uh, followed with a second, uh, for the opening of the public hearing, without objection, that'll be the order. Anybody out in the audience wanna come before the podium and talk on these numbers? Not seeing any.
Very exciting.
Yeah, pretty dry.
All right.
Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second the motion.
And we have a motion on the floor and a second, uh, without objection, that'll be the order, the public hearing is closed. What's your pleasure, guys?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council of Bellflower to adopt resolution twenty-two dash fifty-seven.
Yeah, I'll go and second it.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Santanis?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Someone can call in our colleagues?
We'll get him. Yeah.
Then I can go out.
We're going out, they're coming in, yeah.
That's true, isn't it? Think about that, yeah.
Sunny again.
Well, either buy property or serve on a nonprofit and be out of here.
You got a simple life, don't you?
I like my life.
Right, I understand.
Very simple.
I don't know, you're a pretty busy man for being simple.
No, we didn't take anything away.
Okay. Mister Stewart, item seven B.
This is a long one, so bear with me. Consider as possible action, conduct a public hearing to consider an application from Greg James of McKentley Malek Architects for a conditional use permit and development review and to adopt resolution number twenty dash zero sixty, a resolution approving conditional use permit case number CU twenty-one dash zero three for three restaurants with drive-through components, a fuel station with accessory off-site alcohol sales for development on lots that will measure less than one point five acres, and development review case number DR dash six dash two one dash one two zero one eight to allow for the construction of five commercial buildings on the properties located at one seven six one seven through one seven six three nine Bellflower Boulevard within the design for development for South Bellflower Commercial Area, DFD, applicant is Greg James of McKentley Malek Architects, Inc. And related to this is consideration possible action to conduct a public hearing to consider an application from Greg James of McKentley Malek Architects for conditional use permit and development review and to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash six zero. Same thing. Right. Same thing.
Okay, Mister Coops, you wanna go first?
All right, uh, I'm gonna recuse myself from this project since I have property around the corner from what's being discussed, so I'll go to the other room as prescribed.
And I also gonna recuse myself for having property within a thousand feet of this location, and I'm gonna turn the chair over to Mayor Protim Sunny Santanis. Round of applause, please.
Let the record reflect that, uh, Mayor, Mayor, uh, Dutton and Councilmember Coops have recused themselves from this, uh, from seven B of this agenda item. All right, Mister Stewart.
Miss Corpus will lead it off. Oh, I'm sorry, Rowena, she's, we have a guest appearance tonight, we'll lead it off, so.
That's okay. All right, Miss, uh, Mrs. Concepcion?
Yes, sir. Okay, um, shown above is the aerial photo of the project site, which is, uh, currently comprised of eight lots, um, with a total area of about four acres. The project site is located along Bellflower Boulevard that stretches from Ramona Street to Cedar Street. Um, the property is, uh, zoned design for development for South Bellflower Commercial Area, which is also referenced as DFD with a general plan land use designation of C, which is commercial. There are requests before you for the CP or the conditional use permit as for, uh, three drive-through facilities, a development, or the developments and parcels of less than one point five acres, and a fuel station via director's determination with accessory off-site alcohol sales. Also, um, before use the development review for the construction of five commercial buildings, typically development review is, um, done administratively. However, because we have land use entitlements involved with this project, it needs to be heard concurrently. A, um, lot configuration is being proposed, which would then create five lots, or rather, reconfigure the existing lots into five, uh, lots. Um, we have lot one off of Cedar Street, lot two, lot three, lot four, and five would be off of Ramona Street. And... What we have here are, um, some of the front facade, uh, rendering, colored renderings that would be viewed from, or that would be visible from Bellflower Boulevard. We have, um, this front facade, which would be on pad one, pad two, pad three, and we have pad four, and pad five would be, um, the one off of, uh, Cedar Street, but this would also be facing Bellflower Boulevard. I'm, I'm sorry, Ramona. We do have a fly-through of the project. So what you see is a, um, center identification sign that is only conceptual. Um, staff will be working with the applicant to come up with a more distinct name for the center. This is off of Ramona Street, then off to pad number four, which would be occupied by Seven Eleven, which would be a fuel station with a convenience store. And you, this is approaching a, one of the three driveways off of Bellflower Boulevard. This area right here is pad three, which would be occupied by Pollo Campero. This would be second driveway off of Bellflower Boulevard. Um, there will actually be, as part of the city improvement, a median, um, that would be installed along Bellflower Boulevard, and there would be a left-turn pocket that would enter into, um, this driveway. You can also see that there are some trellises that are being proposed, as well as some landscaping, um, uniform landscaping throughout the shopping center or the center. And this would be pad two, which would be then occupied by Sonic. It is a drive-in and a drive-through type of, uh, facility. Um, both, uh, pad one approaching would be on Cedar Street, this is a multi-tenant building, also with a drive-through component. Both pads one and two will have a queuing capacity of eleven vehicles, and pad three, which is the Pollo Campero, would have a queuing capacity of, uh, six vehicles. Going around the corner now off of, um, Cedar Street here. Again, another, um, center identification sign for the cent, uh, for the project site. And this is the drive-through lane. Um, again, this is a multi-tenant building, um, as proposed, there would be two tenants. It also incorporates, um, outdoor dining area, it's actually pads one, two, and three incorporate, um, outdoor dining areas. And we are now approaching a, the driveway off of Cedar Street. And we are, I'm fast forwarding it so that you can see pad number five, which, um, is again a multi-tenant, uh, building, measures approximately eight thousand square feet, as shown on the submitted plans, about five tenants. And leading out to another, um, driveway off of Ramona Street. So in total, there's five driveways to access the site. And as you can see, there are uniform landscaping designs on the property, as well as, um, trellises throughout, trash enclosures, decorative paving, um, are also some of the improvements that's on the property. Um, not shown here, but there's currently existing, um, power poles on the property, and those will be removed, and the power lines will be undergrounded. And this is now the view from Ramona Street, which is the northern boundary of the project site. You can see there are some decorative paving that, um, marks the pedestrian walkways. And this is the canopy, um, that covers eight pump, fuel pump station, or fuel pumps for the Seven Eleven, um, operation. So as part of the review of the project, we did analyze the drive-through facilities, and the site provides sufficient vehicle queuing for pads one and two. Um, for pad number three, it does have six, uh, queuing capacity, and the traffic study concludes that the design of the drive-out accommodates the number of, uh, vehicles for that, um, operation. Um, as far as the developments and parcels of less than one point five acres, the municipal code requires a conditional use permit for this, um, and the reasoning is the idea to, um, have developments that are larger. And although the property or the sub-project site is being reconfigured to create five lots that are less than one point five acres, um, the project site is still being developed cohesively, and the use of the common area between each lot provides the appearance that the project functions as one large commercial and retail development, which then meets the intent of that requirement one point five. Um, as far as the fuel station, um, again, a director's determination was, um, made. Uh, this is, that the use is compatible with the general plan land use designation of C, which is commercial. And also, um, the operation includes a off-site, an accessory off-site alcohol sales. And I wanna go into that. Um, before you are the census tract information, or the census tract map that shows where the subject property is, which is right here. Um, it is located within five-five-four-four-point-zero-force, um, census tract. Um, there are currently three off-site alcohol licenses issued and active on that, on that, within that census tract. Um, and the, upon approval of the project, this would, uh, would be the fourth site within that census tract. Adjacent to that is census tract number five-five-four-four-point-zero-five. There are currently two active licenses within that census tract, one of which is actually being proposed to be transferred over to the project site. So although there is an increase of, um, license on five, in five-five-four-four-point-zero-four, um, the overall citywide, there isn't one, because it's just being transferred from one census tract to another. Um, the location is within a high crime area, um, and the ABC or Alcohol Beverage Control State Department would require a, uh, public convenance or necessity determination from the city council. As far as the construction of the five commercial buildings, it is of modern design, and it's similar to the recently built commercial buildings within the vicinity, um, such as the one across the street, the Bellflower Center. Um, as far as the traffic impact analysis, it was determined that there's no mitigation measures required for the project. Again, the city will be separately installing a future traffic signal, which would alleviate the level of service within that area, and that would be the intersection of Cedar Street and Bellflower Boulevard. Um, there are one hundred and thirty-two parking spaces and five loading spaces proposed for the site, um, which exceeds the required number of parking. The zoning and general plan consistency, uh, it was found that confirms with the city's general plan land use element and the zoning regulations. As part of the review, we did include or recommending conditions of approval that's included in the staff report, uh, exhibit A of resolution, of the resolution. Um, this would ensure that the project, as conditioned, would, um, comply, or rather, required to comply with local, federal, and state requirements, which includes without limitations, water quality, stormwater requirements, and also providing electrical, or electric vehicle, um, spaces in the future, so. And this concludes staff's presentations, unless there are any questions?
Uh, thank you, Miss, Mrs. Concepcion, a very informative presentation, and, uh, just with your background, um, uh, this property is vacant, uh, has been vacant now for several years since Mister Gold, who's the, who was the founder of, um, Ninety-Nine Cent Store, bought that property. So a lot of our residents have been asking what's gonna happen to that property, and by reference, that property is on the west side of Bellflower Boulevard between Ramona and Cedar. So it's basically the entire block of, um, of Bellflower Boulevard on, from, again, from Ramona and Cedar. Just for clarification, can, can you go back to the first, um, first slide, Rowena? Oh, there you go, the, um, the plot plan, there you go. Um, in, in the, in the video, I noticed that there were, there were trees along this side, but there are no trees here.
Correct, um...
So, which one is more accurate? Am I nitpicking here?
Um, we did include a condition of approval that the landscaping plans also reflect those, uh, mature, the mature trees that's shown on the render.
Yeah, because there's, there's no, there's no tree here, but then, again, on the video, this is lined up with trees.
Correct.
All along, okay, so there'll be more trees in the back, because I think there's, there's a, uh, uh, this is a commercial property right now, so I wanna make sure that there's some kind of privacy here, because if you recall, um, one of the issues when we built the dog park, where the residents were complaining about the potential noise, but, uh, so again, um, potentially, this could be more noise being a commercial property here on downtown.
We did include, um, the condition for that, uh, which would be condition number twenty-two on page twenty-one of the staff report.
Okay.
That essentially requires the applicant to revise the landscaping, to incorporate additional landscaping in that area.
Okay, specifically trees?
We will make sure that there are trees.
I wanna make sure of that, because, uh, I, I was very impressed with the video, and then suddenly I saw this. All right, very good. Um, the, the, um, the alcohol license that you mentioned, the, again, this is for Seven Eleven, right?
That is correct.
So they're gonna transfer from the east side of Bellflower to the west side?
That is correct.
All right, and then, um, I guess I have to ask the applicant about this, um, these are the questions that I, I have. Um, regarding, um, since there's gonna be five, five pods here, um, I'm assuming that potentially, uh, this could be sold separately?
That is correct, in fact, lot two is, um, slated to be sold. That is correct, in fact, lot two is um slated to be sold.
Okay, so having said that, um, Mr. City Attorney, is the CCNR kind of um airtight? With regards to maintenance of the common area? Because I wanna make sure that if these are subdivided and sold individually, that the maintenance is ma- is, is similar. For the all, for the whole development, not just, so you're gonna differentiate pod one and pod two in terms of maintenance.
And Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the council, those documents are separate documents. We've not received them yet for review, but certainly that is always part of our, our review to make sure that it is uniform.
We've made it very clear to the developer that we expect that sort of condition in the final approved documents that will require the maintenance of the property. And money set aside for the maintenance in case we have to come in and do it.
The conditions of approval require both the CCNRs and a separate maintenance agreement, which will be reviewed by my office.
Do we know if they're setting up like a kind of a homeowners association, so to speak?
That also is, is, I believe the commis- Commercial Owners Association is part of the conditions of approval.
Okay, okay, so that's a question, all right, very good. All right, that's all I have for now, um Councilmember Hamada, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Again, first off, thank you for the tree question on the west side there, uh that was one of mine, definitely. Look, Rowena, could you go back to the vicinity map, again, showing that parcel uh that uh is in the back there, that, that commercial parcel? I think it was that one. And maybe just uh, I think it's one more. Yeah, there, there, perfect, perfect, that's the one. So again, uh just maybe for the benefit of everybody, the uh the history of the site and, and. Reason why that could not have been a part of it. Not to put you on the spot, but it basically, it's a thing, yes, it, it, it is a separate site, of course, we know that. And, and yeah, it would have been acquired and, and maybe I'm gonna answer it myself. But uh again, it, it would have been a great opportunity, of course, and, and maybe. Maybe, maybe it's just the uh, maybe a comment that, at least we tried. I think maybe there was some effort to maybe get it, but, and maybe get it into the project, but hey, it, it's, 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 it's a private parcel. It was very likely expensive and um be it the city or the, or the applicant chose not to pursue it and, and that's it, and this is what we have. Yeah, okay, thank you, I, I just uh. Uh but um, and again, um yeah, the question of the landscaping, definitely wanna soften this uh boundary line there. Um let's uh, let's, you can go back to the uh site plan, things like that. Or no, uh well, uh yeah. And again, thank you for bringing up uh the water quality issues and uh, and also some of the other environmental requirements and. You know, within the conditions, there's some uh, you know, specific language that, that, you know, again outlines certain requirements and. And of course, that's gonna come down the road when it's, you know, plan-checked and, you know, there'll be a, maybe some um, you know, again, water collection facilities. Uh you know, some of the other things that, that hopefully will be incorporated and, and uh more than just trying to get the. Uh the landscape planners to, you know, retain the water, that might, again, uh and also, uh you know, not, not to, you know, contaminate the. The sewer system, those be separate and so on, so um again, that's all part of the plan check process.
Correct, as part of the project also, the um applicant did submit their um low-impact development, which is a water quality document also. Which was uh reviewed by our stormwater consultant. So it, it will be more refined when we go through the plan, uh plan-check process, but they did go through that process already.
Yes, all right, good. Art, um I know there'll be a fee, but upfront, do you know of any art that's gonna be incorporated uh for this project?
The applicant was informed of that requirement, um however, we have not received any information whether they, they're choosing to. Install one on the property or to just pay the in-lit fee.
Okay, so uh again, something to be worked, worked on, all right. Oh, last one, the wall, uh the wall requirements. Again, uh the condition says no less than six, no more than eight. So will it be all eight, say in the back there? Or will be the some six, because this is residential here and, and maybe the eight will be here? Along uh the commercial?
Um we did require for them to install a block walls because they're, they are proposing to maintain portions of it. Um we did require that the block walls match, so um we did address it as to the specific height. I believe it's just called out to be six feet.
Six next to the commercial?
The residential and the commercial.
And the commercial, all right, not eight, all right, all right. Maybe something to discuss, all right. I think I'll leave it at that, I, I think I'll have some questions for the architect and, and when it comes to uh the public hearing, all right? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hamada, ju- just additional information that um. Uh Councilmember Hamada and I serve as the, in the subcommittee, so I wanna thank Sir Hamada for that service. Uh it was a pleasure working with the architect on this project. Uh Councilmember Sanchez, even very quiet.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. A lot to, a lot to take in. First off, just I wanna thank staff and then uh the applicant for bringing this forward and I know you guys have all been working countless hours to get this to us. First off, for staff, a couple of questions, uh just to kind of follow up off um from Mayor Protem's comments. My initial concerns regarding the overall long-term maintenance and sustainability of that um would be very important to me and the C uh, C and Rs. I always wanna say CRNR, but you know, CCNRs. That would be very important to me to ensure that we don't ever run into another issue like we have on, you know, Downey and Artesia. Uh and so I look forward to making sure, I know Carl will do his due diligence on that. Uh making sure there's no expiration date and all that good stuff. Um so that, that, that addresses my concern, I feel comfortable knowing that that'll be handled, but definitely wanna vocalize that. Um the other thing I have for staff um regarding. The division of the pads, i- is that a common, is that common practice um in other commercial developments of this magnitude? Because obviously, this is, this is a, a very good-sized um project. Is that a common practice in general for there to be, for them to be subdivided?
Um not quite, normally, it's actually to consolidate them. Um however, from, and that was also discussed with the applicant early on the project. And um I believe the reason why they went this route is because one of the, or not tenants, but one of the, the operators. Is actually wanting to own their own piece of land, so.
Got it, okay, okay, perfect.
Also, um if I could just clarify, I just wanted to make sure, um the applicant did submit the CCNR, but it's. Towards the end of the preparation of the staff report already, so um staff didn't have enough time to review it to make sure that it addresses everything. Um for the project, so I just wanna make sure that that's out there, that, that the applicant has actually started or have drafted it already.
Right, I, I saw it in the BMPs and the, in the low-impact report, I did see mention of it. And obviously, it doesn't go into great detail, but I can see that there is um an understanding that it's important to, to not only the council, but. You know, to staff as well, that we're, you know, um what's it called, ensuring that we're, you know, gonna maintain it properly and so forth. So I, I, okay, that, that works with me. The other question for staff I have on the uh, what is the exact amount that, I think parking, they've done a phenomenal job, one hundred and thirty-two? But required was only seventy-two?
Correct.
Okay, that's good. The, I think the rest of my questions really are gonna be to, to the applicant, uh so, so I'll return my time, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Sanchez, um all right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Hamada.
And Protem, uh just one more question as it. Staff, um again, for the record, by code, this project will need EV stations.
Currently, I believe the requirement per the um Calgary code would be to provide spaces that would allow for future EV charging stations.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, actually, I have one more for staff, maybe two.
Are you done?
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure that uh Councilmember Hamada is done.
No, of course, of course, just saying before we turn it over. My question is maybe for, for Carl or our city attorney. Um regarding the, the alcohol cell and the use of that and the transfer of it. We recently have worked with a, a few other um stores within the city to encourage them to not do single-cell items of certain. You know, specific items like alcohol and cigarettes and things of that nature to uh kind of discourage a certain level of unwanted activity. And it seems to have been working, is that something that we, at this point in time, could have be part of this as a requirement that seven eleven? Doesn't do single-cell items? Or would that have to be a voluntary thing?
My recollection is we've already imposed a requirement with regard to alcohol sales, uh all employees have to go through a training course. There have to be specific signage and I forget about the single-sale thing, but that's certainly something that we could look at. Uh you could, should ask the applicant if they're okay with an amendment to that condition and we can certainly add it in. Uh as part of the draft resolution and the conditions of approval, if that's something that you would like.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, uh and then uh the last question is regarding the queuing area, um on page six. We talked about the proposed uh alleviation. When we're saying proposed alleviation, we're saying that within the own, within the own dev- uh pad, there's sufficient um. You know, road to queuing to allow for any over after six?
Correct, so that would only be applicable for pad three because pads one and two have sufficient uh queuing. Um so pad three, which is right here, only has a queuing for six. The way um the site was designed, so if there could be overflow.
Okay.
That could accommodate that overflow, somewhat similar to the operation, yeah, onsite without affecting um, you know, or spilling over to the street.
Into the street, perfect, okay. Um and then lastly, the mention about the boulevard dividers, is that, I know that's not obviously up for discussion today, but. I'm assuming the, the goal will be to cover the entire, uh from Artesia all the way to the end, right? End of the rows or to the end of the city boundaries?
Mr. Greggy?
The uh, the median portion that's being built on Balfour Boulevard as part of the uh HSIP project is just covering from. Uh Ramona uh down to Cedar, that's gonna be where the majority of the median is.
Okay, for now, okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor Protem, that, that's it for now, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Hamada, any more questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Uh so moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hamada, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, uh to close the public hearing, I mean, to open the public hearing without objection, that will be the order. Okay, who's gonna start from the applicant?
Good evening, I'm Jeff Gold, I'm the applicant, my family owns the property. We've been working with uh city staff and city management for um a couple of years now, several years now. And although the team has been very detail-oriented and very focused on the, you know, on what's in the best interest of the residents of Balfour. It's been a good relationship and we appreciate all the cooperation. And here to answer any questions, I think staff put together a good, complete presentation, happy to, you know, address any issues about the CCNRs or things like. Uh any other questions you have and.
Uh Mr. Gold, I have a question for you.
Sure.
What would your dad say about this project? Because you know that your dad came to City Hall about this property, he fell in love with the property and he just went from there.
So I will.
So what would he say?
I will be, I'll, I'll be, I'll be honest, as a, as a, as a retailer and a business person. His attitude is always do everything to maximize visibility and business. So his comments would be, he wants bigger signs and smaller trees. You ask, that's, the, those would, those would be his two, those would be his two comments, there's plenty, there's plenty, you know, there's, there's plenty, there's plenty of, there's plenty of parking, there's plenty of parking. Which is another one that's important, uh that was important to him. I think that it would be important that, you know, we, we put a project together that serves the, that serves the local community. And for, is convenient and um really is a nice project for the, for the city, that it, that it make, you know, improve, uh improves the city. And the lives of the residents, not in some grandiose way, but in, you know, day-to-day practical things of having a good place to, you know. Get some chicken or a burger or a cup of coffee or um something from the convenience store to fill in your day-to-day.
And, and considering the paths that they've been proposed so far, I mean, I'm very excited about it, Playa Campero, uh Sonic and then seven eleven, those are very, very impressive and. Those are the things that we need in the particular area. Um so the other question I have for you is um, oh well, it's a comment about the parking. Uh we may think that one hundred and thirty-two is, is a lot compared to what's required, but keep in mind, there's a drive-through. So the queuing is gonna be affected, so we, we may need those eleven, eleven vehicles for pads one to, one and two. And I think we be, we may come short on pad three eventually, so I, I, I think the city will be well-served with those um, you know, parking spaces. All right, um I, I think the, the hottest question here is the CCNR, if you can address that?
Sure, so we've been uh working with the tenants and the, and the one owner who's gonna be another co-owner of the center. And um we finally got comments from everybody, once we, it was getting to a close enough version to what we thought was final and what we're comfortable with. We forwarded that to staff, it was a week or two ago. And basically, it provides that all, you know, all of the owners of the property sign an agreement that goes in perpetuity. That say the five parcels will be operated together as a, as a single shopping center. And one of the, one of the owners will be designated at all times as the maintenance director uh for the shopping center. And they will be responsible for the, for the maintenance of all the lan- uh landscaping in the co- um in the common areas. And then it governs how much each of the, you know, what percentage of the total cost each of the owners is responsible for. And deals with things like if an owner doesn't pay, then what's the potential recourse? Making sure that chart the, the party who's responsible, the um.
So what's the, what's the recourse if they don't pay up?
You can sue and there's, there's penalties and le- uh penalties and legal fees and ultimately, it can be a lien on the, ultimately, it can be a lien on the property. And it could be, uh my understanding is ultimately, that could be foreclosed or create a, create a violation of a loan. By the way, so you know, we plan to continue to own four of the five parcels indefinitely, we have no plans to, we have no plans to sell. The fifth parcel will be owned by um, will be owned by the, the Sonic operator. So we have no plans to sell the other, the other four parcels. It had to be at least three parcels because there, um the way that it's set up, parcel one is on the, is on the corner, then there's the, uh then there's the Sonic parcel. So you, they have to touch each other, so it would have had to been at least three. And the pad five that's in the back, that was um, still, we're in the process, uh process of leasing that and we don't um. We're hoping to develop it as one phase, but we may do it as a second phase if we don't have enough, um you know, the economic uncertainty that we have right now. Little, um you know, it's a big investment to make if we don't have enough tenants lined up. But we think it'll happen fairly soon, once uh, once we, uh once we have the approval of the project. And we go to the um, we go to the retail community, showing the quality of the project and the quality of other tenants. As well as the improvements that the city's doing to the median, we think we'll be able to lease it out um with several good tenants in the pad five as well.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're off to a good start because you already have three, three of the pad, three of the, three of the five, so you have sixty percent already in place, so that's a good start. All right, and my other burning question to you is, I know that this, the name is a placeholder, uh Balfour Conven- All right, and my other burning question to you is, I know that this, the name is a placeholder, Bellflower Convenience Center. So if I can make a suggestion to you, if you can come up with something that is catchy, that can be identified as Bellflower, something that is become, that will become a destination, so let me give you an example. When you hear the word "The Grove," you know exactly where it is, right? So I'm looking for something, something like that, because this is a massive development, almost four acres in the city of Bellflower, so it's huge. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to convince it to come up with a, a name that is catchy, that is identifiable and something that makes this place a destination.
We'll, we'll, we'll work with staff, we'll come up with something, and if we don't, we'll find somebody with better ideas than we have.
Okay, very good. And then, and then let me just confirm about Sonic, because when I talk to someone about this, can you show the Sonic portion? I just wanna confirm what was described to us, not the other one where the parking lot? Which is Sonic, no, the other one, there's the, I think it's before this.
Did you want the fly-through? Maybe you're referring to the fly-through?
Could be, let me, let me just kind of go direct to the question, will they be on roller skates? Because that's, that's the typical Sonic.
So honestly, I don't know. We, they, I guess they weren't able to come to the, come tonight, but we asked, we asked them to come if they could, but I really don't know.
They, I believe they, they actually are, will be on roller skates, I'm the civil engineer, my name's Steve.
Oh, there you go, that's the one, okay.
We have been asked to make sure that the, the slopes specifically towards the outside of the building, I don't know if you can keep going. There is a, there will be a Sonic employee-only ramp towards that southern side there that will be designated employee-only and will not have truncated domes, it's not an ADA access. Those truncated domes tend to trip up those skaters.
Okay, I see, yes, so they will be on the skates?
That is correct.
Okay, that's gonna be a winner, I'm telling you that.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, I, I don't think we're gonna be comfortable with a condition that they're all exactly on skates, but it sounds like they're designing it so that they can support the, the roller skates.
Yeah, okay, good, good. I'm very excited about this project, as I mentioned earlier, Councilmember Hamada and I were part of the subcommittee. So my, my other question to you is, what is your timeline for this development? If it's approved today,
Yes.
When do you open?
When we open, so the whole opening process is probably still a year and a couple of months out. The longest timeframe will be SoCal Edison undergrounding those above-ground power lines. So we're currently in process right now, I believe it's called a Rule 20 undergrounding, it does take some time and they are backed up. Right now, we are confirming all of the tenants' power loads, as well as their one-line diagrams, which is an electrical engineering plan that we have to put together. Once that happens, it's still, right now, about eight months for them to mobilize and underground.
Okay, but I think staff can help you on that with Edison, right, Mr. Stewart?
We'll try. Their experience has been our experience too.
Oh, really, okay, all right, very good. Any question of the applicant, Mr. Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. First off, Mr. Gold, again, thank you for getting it here to us, so that's, again, to be commended. Yeah, I remember on, I think I was on one or two calls and talked about some of the old project and I, I'm glad we came to this, this, again, this proposal. To the, to the design staff, well, first off, again, I, I do wanna reiterate the word excitement. It definitely, it really is the key word we call attached to this project. I think this will be something that's gonna be great for this community, again, more of the shopping, eating opportunities and, and, you know, especially Sonic is gonna be regional and it's gonna draw, so. Again, I think, looks like you've done well with the materials and the colors, definitely wanna, again, praise the architect. Are you the architect? Good, thank you. Again, again, well thought out with the mixture and the colors. I had asked a question earlier, staff, about, about art, are you, any thoughts now or later?
I mean, we're, we're open.
All right, all right, think about it, that's, that's what, I just want you to hear, yeah.
We talked about, you know, we can, we can pay the fee, we can put something onsite, you know, I love art, but I'm not an artist. So that's definitely not, definitely not gonna be me doing, doing artwork, but we can, you know, we're happy to work with, happy to work with the staff and figure something out.
So Rowena, could you go to the site plan? Just wanted to hear from the architect on, again, why, we've been told, and I just wanna hear from the architect.
Councilmember, could you repeat that again, please?
The, the site plan, site plan, oh, the lot, yeah.
The lot, the big lot.
No, no, not the big one, no, the one with, with had the, you know, parcel divisions and so on, I think, yeah, the site plan. Did I say, not say site plan?
There you go.
Oh, there, yeah, there it is, perfect, perfect, that's it, a pad two, which is Sonic. So this area, we were explaining why that's not raised and.
Yeah, my, I'm Greg James with McKinley Malik Architects. That is actually a Sonic request and a Sonic prototype, and that's how they run their operations. The reason being is they're, they're saying they typically don't have a line going all the way around the building of cars. So cars could technically come in from the back and then come across that and slip into that drive-through lane.
Yeah, okay.
And that was the reason for the request.
That's very logical, I could see that, so, all right, thank you for that. Still a question for the architect, and I don't know if the civil is involved in this, but when it, when it comes to fire flow and, and, you know, the fire department's gonna require those, the somewhat sizable valves. Do you have an idea of placement or does each building gonna have one, basically, I think?
Yes, each building will have its own fire detector tank.
Yes, and so, so we know those valves are gonna be showing up somewhere on the site and, and obviously, they're gonna need to be screened and, and so on. Hopefully, but typically, they, sometimes they get to the, towards the street. Any further thoughts on that?
So the, because of the streetscape that will be happening on Bellflower Boulevard, we have designed our utility connections to come off of both Ramona and Cedars, so the side streets, to prevent any additional cuts into the new asphalt and Bellflower. So lot pad one and two will actually be serviced off of one fire connection, where lots three and four will also be serviced from a separate fire connection. And pad five, lot five, will have its own fire connection as well. So each fronting landscape buffer will have a large, presumably, eight-inch backflow, so fire perf, fire protection backflow device. And there will also be approximately four hydrants onsite as well. There is in the submittal, there is a fire access plan and, and fire hydrant plan. We have spaced those hydrants based off of the California Fire Code separation requirements as well.
All right, yeah, just make the effort to, you know, conceal them as best as possible, I guess, you know, of course, you know, fire needs to have access to it, of course, but
Correct.
It'll, it'll hopefully be, you know, fitted in well. I think my last question, as I talked earlier about the wall, again, staff is gonna require a six-foot to make it consistent with the rest of the walls that are gonna be kept.
The way it's written in the recommended conditions of approval is that it's minimum six feet.
Yeah, all right, minimum. And I'm just, I was thinking about Mr. Gold's comment about smaller trees, so with a six-foot, bigger trees probably would help, especially in the back.
So I, we're, we're keeping some of the walls, we're already at a certain height, and then there's areas where there's no walls and we're adding new, so.
If you can come closer to the microphone.
The curtain intent is to go to the minimum six feet of, on the, on the walls.
And with the proper landscaping.
Are you objecting to the six feet, wanting to eight feet?
No, 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 again, I wanted to also clarify, again, from Mr. Gold's comment about, you know, bigger signs, smaller trees, and I said,
The trees in the back, he likes, trees in the front, he doesn't.
All right, that's what, that's what I figured.
So we're talking about the trees in the back?
Yes, definitely, the trees in the back, because that's, that's where we both, we both saw that, and we.
And we, and we were aware of the request for the additional trees along there, and that's already been discussed with staff and agreed to.
Yeah, they were, they were, they were nice blowing in the wind in the fly-through. They have to keep moving, yeah.
Has to be in unison?
Only in San Anas.
All right, again, very excited for this, and again, thank you for getting it here, and hopefully, we're looking forward to a, a timely, you know, construction period and, and, yeah, people can start eating and shopping.
So, so you wanna, you have?
You have additional information?
We have, we have one request and the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Condition number twenty, twenty-four, is that, it says the applicant must install trash compactors for each of the proposed trash enclosures. And there's some pushback from the, from the tenants, that, from Sonic and from Poyo Campero, 7-Eleven, that have all told us that there are lower-volume stores than like, say, an In-N-Out or a Raising Canes, and that's where you, a lot of times, will see those compactors used, is whenever they have the more, you know, they have a higher volume and that they don't typically use them in their operations, and so they're asking if we could get that condition removed. Add more information on that or not?
Yeah, and as far as the size of the enclosures as well, they are sized to include three double-size, six-cubic-yard bins, which are already on the larger side, not typical. Typically, we see waste management give three-yard bins, and so we technically would have double the size allocated inside our trash enclosures than what operations would normally have. And the reason for the three existing spacing right now is for trash, recycle and the compost. And so in the event that a tenant, representation of 7-Eleven, would fill up their bin quicker, we could ask for an additional three-cubic-yard bin instead of the trash compactor.
Okay, I'd like to invite our Public Works Director, Assistant City Manager Len Gurecki, to kind of respond to the question, because he's our resident expert.
Yes, of course.
Far from it, with the way the state operates.
Well, you are the resident expert, okay.
So, Bernie and I would be happy to go back and talk with Beth regarding this condition. I, I think what you, what's important to understand here is the amount of space that will be taken up by bins, the fact that each business will have to have its own account, therefore, its own bins, its own enclosures, and working along that, you know, probably is what led us to conditioning the, the compactor, just simply from a space, a decrease in frequency and its ability to handle everything from normal trash to the organics, to the, to the recycling in those bins, so.
City Attorney had a suggestion on this, we could resolve this by amending the condition to state that would be approved by the Director of Public Works as reasonably necessary, as he works with them on the needs there. We have a pretty good history of the way things go in this town with the recent developments that we've had, and we are having to plan for the digesters and the compactors in different places where in the past we haven't. So we're happy to review it with you, but I think the best you do now, if the council concurs, is to let Len be the final say, he certainly knows the standards on that, so.
Because if I recall, when we had a subcommittee meeting, Mr. Hamada, Mr. Gurecki brought up this issue, so we kind of deferred that question to Mr. Gurecki.
Yeah, we're not, quite honestly, on the surface, we're not really willing to relinquish that requirement on this property, because we think it's necessary, but we're willing to work with you, and as long as Len understands, he understands the standards that we're trying to apply and that, you know, if we reasonably can require it, and in some cases, we can, maybe not in some others, but at least from that point, you can have a discussion with the Public Works Director and how to best do that.
So are you okay with that?
Yeah, perhaps we can.
Can you come, let's hear it, yeah.
Sorry, yeah, yeah, we're fine, we're fine with that, I mean, perhaps it's running the electrical and whatever drainage lines we need to run in case we're gonna do the compactors in the future, and then if it's needed, we'll, we'll add them, but.
And that's a standard we take pretty seriously, quite frankly, but it's worth, it's worth having a discussion with you about.
Okay, I think that's fair.
All right, staff, just a moment, yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, Beth, is it required by code or not?
Not in the zoning code.
Okay, all right, that's all right. And, and you wouldn't object to more frequent pickups if, if it starts overflowing, of course?
I would require it.
Yeah, okay, there it goes, all right. No, I, I think we, we had a kind of a discussion about this at, at the subcommittee and definitely our resident expert replied and, and I think, yeah, no, I think it's reasonable to, to work with you, all right, thank you.
If we're finished with that, I think there is also a question about the ABC license for the single-use, and we do, we do have a representative of 7-Eleven here who can, who wanna try to discuss that.
Thank you, sir Gold, yes, actually, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Darlene Reeves, 7-Eleven Real Estate, nice to meet you and glad to be here.
Hi Darlene, how you doing? Well, actually, so the, the question really was, and, you know, we've had some, we've been being proactive on handling some unwanted activities in certain areas, and the way we've been doing that is by kind of working with the local store owners to minimize the sale of, or eliminate the sale of single-item beers, liquor and alcohol and stuff like that, and cigarettes and things of that nature. And it seems to have been working over the last few months, it was, you know, our attorney's idea and so forth, and we moved with it. Is that, you think something that 7-Eleven would be willing to cooperate with, with us on that end?
Um, I think that it's, the concern is safety, and I think that's probably what the concern is. Transferring it from where it is now, kind of far back in the center, to a place that's well-lit and kind of providing a safer environment, I think it's an opportunity to still serve the budget beer buyer, you know?
It's not about safety, it's about a congregation of people who sit and drink singles in front of those locations, we have a history of that at the current 7-Eleven, that's why he's bringing it up.
Okay, so yeah, I understand that too.
Yeah.
So I mean, we're, we're willing to work with you guys 100%, we'd love to keep that opportunity there, but we understand that the compromising we might have to make as far as safety or staff or training or whatever it may be to accommodate that as well.
Perfect, okay, thank you, I like, thank you very much, and if I may, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, I'd like to ask a few other questions. Mr. Gold, first off, pleasure to have you here, as you know, I'm not part of the subcommittee, so it's my first time seeing everything. So excited to see it here, everyone, thank you for your information and for everything. Couple of things, on the note about your, about signage and bigger signage and more visibility, is there plans in the future to find some way, you know, to acquire some land near the 91 and put up a nice big Sonic, you know, the, the standard Sonic sign that you normally see like in Fullerton or, or when I'm going down the five to, you know, to north, or five north?
I, you know, we don't have any specific plans, I think in terms of the, if it was just to serve the Sonic, it would be, you know, it'd be really up to, it'd really be up to them to, to do that, if it was something that could, you know, advertise the, advertise the whole center, then we'd certainly be open to it, that would be great for the, you know, great for the property.
I would encourage it, you know, it's something unique, it's something great, kind of talking about Mr. Mayor Pro Temp's comments about, you know, being something that, that, that'll be a drive and bring people to the city, it'd be neat to see something like that. Kind of like the In-N-Out sign, you know, just visibility-wise, it'd be nice to have. My opinion, no requirement, just food for thought, wanted to throw it out there. The, the other item that I wanted to talk to you about, on the Plan A, the sheet number A010, item 15 and 16, there's mention about a future electrical vehicle stall. You have seven stalls there and then a future clean air and van pool, EV stall, four stalls. My question there is, when, when it says future electric vehicle stalls, are they simply stalls or are they actual electric charging stations?
Yeah, as has been stated before, so the California Green Building Code only requires those stalls to be. Yeah, um, as has been stated before, so the California Green Building Code only requires those stalls to be future. And so, um, what that means right now in the code is that we would install, uh, direct conduits from the back room, uh, so the electrical room in each tenant into that space, uh, two empty conduits, upholstery, um, for, and that load would actually have to be available inside those panels as well. Um, if those stalls were to actually have EV stalls in the future, all that would need to be done is that stall would have to be, the, the charger would be placed there and hooked up into the, into the electrical room.
So you'll leave it prepped and ready for the future?
That's correct.
When it's required? Okay, okay, very good. And you would know this better than I would, obviously, I'm not, you know, an engineer. The, is the, is there a requirement for the number of stalls? Is that the seven and four?
That's correct. So the number of stalls, uh, for EV actually mimics the ADA code as well. Um, so I'm not off the top of my head, but if you had ten stalls on your, on your site, you'd require one future EV stall. If you had up to twenty-five and it's two and it, it grows, um, and then it's a percentage base once it gets over a hundred stalls.
Okay, very good. Thank you for sharing that, appreciate it. Awesome, thank you for that clarification. Okay, let's see, and then the other one I had for you, um, on the pad number five, the additional tenants, would you, Mr. Gold, do you believe that there would be flexibility if, if you were to get a, um, I know you have right now, you're scheduling five tenants there? One of the things that I hear a lot from residents is the need or the desire for a grocery store doesn't, not, you know, not necessarily one of those large, large grocery stores, but a more, um, convenience store style, similar to Seven-Eleven, which I like about that, by the way. Do you believe you would have, is that something that would be of interest of maybe having a, a, um, grocery store in that back pad five? Like a Fresh &amp; Easy or, uh, what are those new ones, the Amazon Fresh? Is that the, the?
I mean, I think we'd certainly be open to any, any good users that serve the community and that's harmonious with the rest of the center. Um, I, in terms of that specific user, I think their square footage requirement's a lot, uh, a lot greater. So they would not, um, but there may be, there are some specialty stores who may, um, may be, uh, may be interested in a smaller format and we'd certainly be open to that.
Yeah, I think there's a neighborhood Walmart or something like that, they usually run on a smaller... I'm just throwing food for, you know, just the information out there.
Yeah, they're still not, they're, they're still not quite that small.
Okay.
Even the neighborhoods are, you know, twenty, thirty thousand square feet.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. And then, uh, lastly, for... Thank you for clarifying the C, uh, CC and our comments, uh, the idea that you're keeping four of them, uh, you know, it's reassuring as well. So just want to share that. And then lastly, um, let me see here. That's it, actually. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, that, that concludes my questions.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Hamada, any more final questions?
Yeah, as I think here, um, Mr. Gold, pad one, um, right now it's, um, you know, looking like a split, uh, building. You're still out there talking maybe for a, a single user.
We, we have one, uh, we have one tenant who we're negotiating a lease for the front approximately eighteen hundred square feet. And it's not signed yet, they've asked us to keep it confidential, but it's a cha- uh, it's a cha- uh, it's a chain, very high-quality, um, very high-quality business. I think everybody would be very, uh, very pleased with it. They have drive-through and sit-down and, uh, the patio use. And then we think once that lease is signed, we'll have, um, it'll be relatively easy to lease the back portion, seeing the, the strong co-tenancy there.
Yeah, uh, again, uh, you know, with a pad two, the Sonic, I, you know, to me, you know, Sonic is, is definitely one of the, uh, you know, gems of this project and I think it's one of those bill that they will come, so. Definitely, that's, that's been the big plus of this project, I think. Uh, Seven-Eleven, the, uh, single item, uh, matter, um, staff, a while back, um, our last, uh, convenience store, gas station, um, that's a competitor. Was that requirement imposed on, on that one? If you, if you recall which one, if, if, I didn't want to identify.
I don't believe it was.
I don't think it was, sure, alright, okay.
Are you referring to the Lakewood in Gardendale?
No, no, that's, that's even older.
Clark, Clark and Artisha.
Clark and Artisha. No, uh, Clark in Somerset, at least the one I remember. So, you, you don't recall any, any, anything about?
No.
Alright.
Don't recall that.
Yeah, maybe it was related to the, uh, the access points.
Yeah, the issue here though is the local history that we have, that's what's driving this.
Oh, yes, definitely across the street, I, I...
May I address, um, something that Mr. Sanchez brought forward though?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so this, um, convenience store is about double the size is of the one that we have currently. So we have a lot more to offer. So, um, as far as the community and, um, fresh food and a bacon store and things like that that we're going to be offering at this location, um, there'll be a lot more of, um, retailer initiative, so whatever the community asks for, we'll be able to bring into the store.
But I, I think you heard, you heard the concern here is, um, people congregating, buying single, single...
Yes, I understand.
Single cans and drinking and...
It would be great if you banned the sales of single forties, that would make us very happy, so.
Well, if I understand, Darlene, your, your point about having the larger offerings is that your business has a very big vested interest in attracting the entire community.
Yes, exactly.
So that the alcohol will be a much smaller portion of the total sales. Therefore, you don't want, you know, it's in your own selfish vested interest to make sure that the whole community feels comfortable to come and do their grocery and other shopping.
Well, especially because you're going to have a gas station, so you don't want a lot of people circling around even panhandling.
Oh, of course, yes. Yeah, that'll deter people that took them to get gas and...
Okay, so, because I think it's also to your, to your interest to do that.
We're going to need to have a discussion about that, yeah, because I think that there's several issues. Or I think there's a couple of workarounds, but we're going to have to find one.
Yes, absolutely.
And Mr. Mayor Protem, since the applicants are here being so agreeable to everything, let me propose some language to the two conditions that we've been talking about. One is condition number twenty-four.
Okay, I was about to ask you that, okay.
Which has to do with the trash compactors. That would be rewritten to read as follows. If reasonably required by the Public Works Director, the permity must install trash compactors for each of the proposed trash enclosures. And we would have condition number thirty-three and it would read as follows. Signs must be posted at all entrances and exits of the convenience store premises stating that the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption is prohibited. Permity, permity understands and agrees that single-serving alcoholic beverage sales are prohibited.
Did you hear, uh, condition thirty-three? Can, can you repeat, Mr. City Attorney?
Permity understands and agrees that single-serving alcoholic beverage sales are prohibited.
There'll be a condition for not having the trash compactor?
No, 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 the single, the single. Single serving. Like one can.
On the sales of single cans of alcohol or bottles of alcohol, they don't, we want to stop the sales of singles. If, if you're good with that, we're going to write it in the conditions.
So I, I mean, is it something that you, you said you could work on still or?
Well, look, there's, I, I'm saying it's, it's our preferred mode of operation. We've had nothing but problems within other locations and we're going to dig in pretty hard. You would have to, quite frankly, you'd have to come up with a, a very, very detailed security plan to stop that if you didn't have that condition in there. And I don't think any of those solutions are going to make you particularly happy, but it is a history we have. I'm almost a hundred percent certain it'd be duplicated here if you didn't have the, either the security to stop it or you prohibited the sales of it.
And if I can just tag-team with that thought, it's going to be easier to write it here than it is for a settlement agreement between the city and your premises somewhere down the road, yeah.
Because there'd be, look, we, like I said, we have a history of that and just right across the street. And we're, it'll be a zero-tolerance situation, we're going to put up with it, a, a new location especially. So that just simplifies that and I just do not fight, truthfully.
I will not fight. I, I, I feel that we can serve a community with that offering, but I want to make you guys happy and I would be, um, remiss if I did it, say, yeah.
Well, keep in mind also that you have, um, higher-quality neighbors in your business, so Sonic, Sonic and Poyo Campero, so... So you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so if we can just have agreement on both condition number twenty-four and thirty-three with the...
Twenty, twenty-four is fine.
Okay.
And may I make a suggestion on behalf of Seven-Eleven, I'm also a representative of them, um, that we do include single sales less, or prohibit the sales less than three hundred and seventy-five milliliters. Um, that would also, if you were to write it the way that you, you did present, it would prohibit the sale of bottles of wine as well, which we... So that's the standard condition I always see. I'm pretty sure that bottles of wine are greater than three hundred and seventy-five milliliters and the three seventy-five would exclude a forty ounce.
Seven fifty is a bottle of wine.
Is it seven fifty, I think it's seven fifty.
Yeah, a standard bottle of wine is seven fifty, so this...
This would prohibit, prohibit the forty.
Okay.
Forty would be bigger than the, than the three. That's, that prohibits, that would prohibit the sale of the, the... We're really trying to stop the sales.
Okay, so how many ounces is a forty?
It's forty, it's forty.
But I think we need, I think they need, they need to be able to sell bottles of wine. So we need to word it in a way they could sell a, uh, they could sell bottles of wine. What's a bottle of wine?
Seven fifty.
So a bottle of wine is smaller than a forty, that's a...
Twenty-four about.
That I know.
What, perhaps we said malt liquor or beer in forty ounces or less? Single serving?
Okay.
You tell me.
Yeah, it's your direction, guys.
Okay. What's, what's the largest single bottle, because I'm, I'm not a beer, I'm not a beer drinker.
Forty ounces.
They're big bottles, right?
Forty ounces.
Forty ounces. So we're trying to prohibit...
That's the one, that's what we see our residents double-fisting.
So we're trying to prohibit that.
I'm just kidding. We're trying to prohibit that, correct?
Okay, after forty.
Right.
So in excess of forty can be sold individually? So a bottle of wine can be sold?
Can we, I, I think what they're asking is to exempt a bottle of wine.
Right.
So I think we could write it with exempt of wine, that wouldn't fall in that category, right? Can we just be that direct or do we need to?
Well, there are single servings of...
Wine.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Of wine to the small ones, so.
Oh, I see.
The single shot.
Well, there is shots.
Right. Well, I think we need to go to the, to the size of the container, okay?
Yeah, I mean, so you're talking about standard bottles of wine, so you put the prohibition of forty and you say standard bottles of wine.
So the seven fifty milliliters would be okay?
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I, I'm, I'm comfortable suggesting that just so that we can move forward, that staff figure it out? Or, or do we need to have, oh, nevermind.
We need to have it.
So we'll, we'll, um, seven fifty milliliters be okay?
Yes.
Okay. Are you okay with that, seven fifty?
Yeah.
Can be sold individually, that's a bottle of wine.
Right, but that doesn't cover forty ounces.
We still, the bigger problem is the sale of the forty ounce...
Right, so if...
Cans of beer, which is greater than seven hundred and fifty milliliters.
Oh, I see.
That's the problem. So, well, we can do it this way.
Do you serve beer and write it exactly as that?
Single serve malt liquor, beer and ale?
Yes.
We can prohibit the sales of single serve beer, malt liquor and ale.
FYI, a forty ounce is eleven hundred and eighty-two milliliters.
That's, um, that's a lot of wine.
That's a lot of wine.
That's a lot of wine.
Alright, let's try this.
Okay.
Permity understands and agrees that sales of single-serving malt liquor and beer is prohibited. Malt liquor, ale and beer. Ow, I don't know who's going to do the field test on this, but...
Regardless of the size of the container?
Yeah, I'm just putting it there regardless, without mentioning the size.
Alright, uh, ma'am, are you okay with that?
I am, thank you so much.
There you go.
Alright, yeah, thank you.
Again, we said single, single serve.
Single.
Wait, well, yes, thank you. I was getting clarification real quick. So I think that sounds great. The only thing is, it does not include har- hard liquor.
We don't have that type of license?
Okay, great, perfect, thank you, appreciate that clarification.
And in anticipation of your next question about single cigarette sales, that's already prohibited.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't going to ask that, I already knew I was.
Alright, I'm just trying.
I know that Seven-Eleven wouldn't do that. I know it's happening, but I know that Seven-Eleven...
Alright, just for clarity, can you repeat, uh, the re-written condition thirty-three?
Yes, sir.
For the sake of the applicant.
Signs must be posted at all entrances and exits of the convenience store premises stating that the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption is prohibited. Permity understands and agrees that sales of single-serving malt liquor, ale and beer is prohibited. I'm seeing nods all around for the record.
What, can you repeat the first part, the sale of alcohol is prohibited?
No.
No.
Oh, onsite consumption, okay.
There'll be signage.
That's the existing...
I misheard it, except for the gas station.
Well, I can see her smiling, so you're okay with that, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Alright, um, do you have any question of us? We've been asking you questions earlier. Any question? I want to be fair to you. Okay, you're good?
One more, I'm sorry, one more question for Seven-Eleven, just, uh, because I think that would be the only one that had possibilities. Look, outdoor displays and like certain equipment such as propane, uh, sales, uh, newspaper racks, water machines, that stuff you guys don't...
We've eliminated that from...
Yeah, very good, that's right.
Follow-up question, if I may, if you're, if you concluded.
That's, that's...
Alright, cause I'm Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. First of all, I, I heard groceries will be, okay, perfect. What Seven-Eleven could I go to nearby to see what this one's going to model?
You know, that's a great question, there's a lot of them being remodeled as we speak.
Okay.
Um, so I could find out and then follow up with you and, and let you know.
Perfect, thank you.
But a lot of them have, will have like a nine-foot grocery section for like ready-to-eat craft, um, um, Nudeloni, stuff like that, so...
Thank you.
Well, I thought you were going to say Belfast could be the first one.
It's going to be the first one like this, with the settings on the outside.
Exactly, there you go. That's the answer I was looking for. Thank you so much. Alright, um, thank you. I'd like to hear from the public, there's any comment from the public, any question? You'd be an opportunity to chime in?
Yep. This is the old flattable, uh, parcel, I was, yeah. Glad to finally see something happening with that. Uh, my understanding is four out of the five buildings are, have tenants for them?
It's right now, it's three.
Or all five?
Three.
Huh?
Officially, it have three tenants already.
Three.
Out of five.
Okay. Cause I, I would imagine it's, say pad one, two and three, which would leave five in the back, hasn't got a tenant yet.
It's pad, pads two, three and four.
Two, three and four have the tenants, okay. Cause I brought up an item a while back about possibly relocating a restaurant, which I would, I would love to see happen because with these people here with three parcels already with tenants for it, there could be room for a restaurant in the back of, if the city is willing to work with it money-wise and the developer to help out a little bit, to move, relocate the Sizzler. And at that point of relocating the Sizzler, would open up that whole big lot there where Northgate Market is interested. And I told you, I know the people at Northgate. So that would be up to the owners here, developers or whatever, if they're interested in something of that nature and if the city is too. Now, the other thing that kind of bothers me, of battling around about one container. Now, the other thing that kind of bothers me, battling around about one container, alcohol. How do you sit there and try to put something on a business and you don't even own a business or know nothing about a business? It's not up to you people to tell these, this poor lady here that she can only sell, she can't sell one item. She's got to sell one item only, or whatever it is. It's none of your darn business. You're not running it. You don't own the business. They're trying to make, make something of it and sell, sell a product. So, to even try to formulate something and tell a person how they're going to operate that business, or you don't like it, you all need to be replaced. You're stepping out of your bounds, and personally, I think you've opened yourself up for one hell of a lawsuit, and you deserve it, too. Thank you.
All right, um, thank you, John. The, um, the applicant agreed to the conditions, so that's theirs to say. Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Do I have to put my name on here?
Yeah, please sign in. Uh, just, just for information, your name's going to be in the minutes of the meeting, so that's why we're asking for your names.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, my name is Brian Espinoza, resident of Bellflower. I actually do live on Cedar Street, down the street from here, so I did want to express my concerns about the project. Um, I do have three main concerns that I wanted to address, and my first one being that, you know, we're past COVID, and this is more of an auto-centric project, more than a community-based project. You know, um, to me, having three drive-throughs in one lot just doesn't seem right when you want to create a sense of community in your, in your city. Um, kind of like the council member Hamada pointed out, like, if you want to have art there, do you want people to just drive by it, or do you want them to interact with it? Uh, I think that's very important to create a space where people want to hang out, such as the In-N-Out on Artesia. You can compare it to the drive-through one that's on South Street in Bellflower. More people are going to go to the one on, the one on Artesia, because you can hang out there, you can eat inside and just hang around. So that's my, um, problem with that. The second one was my problem with the seven eleven. Um, I personally think there was a lack of thorough site analysis, just knowing that there's a seven eleven across the street. I'm not sure what the plans are for that.
It's going to move.
It's going to move there, and I'm assuming what would place it, it's already built for a liquor store. I'm not sure if that would be the next tenant that would move in there. So I don't know if that same problem would stay. And then just, um, the, the fact that there's a gas station being implemented when there's already four, less than, less than half a mile, within a half a mile radius, you have the two that are, I believe, on Beach Street, right over the ninety-one, the one on Clark and Artesia.
The one on Park.
Park, I'm sorry. The seventy-six and the Chevron, the one on Clark and Artesia, and then you have the one on Woodruff and Artesia as well. Those are all within less, about half a mile or less, which I think, I don't think it's essential to put that in there. I don't think it's what we're looking for in that neighborhood. And just the way that it's laid out as well, um, there's a lot of homeless issues on Cedar Street, and just be seeing how right behind the gas station, it might not happen when it's built, but give it a couple years and you're going to see people camping behind it, as well as on the side closer to, I believe, Rose or Ramona. Um, I can already see that happening. Um, it's happened already in a couple of new places that are built. And my last one, it had to do with like a public health issue. I think that the city of Bellflower is pushing too many fast food chains in the city. As council member Sanchez pointed out, um, a grocery store is really needed, and I don't think anyone wants to buy their groceries at a seven eleven. You're not going to get all your produce there. The only ones that I see in the city are going to be the Smart &amp; Final and the Aldi, that's just like a mile and a half away, which doesn't make sense that I can walk five minutes to fifteen different fast food restaurants, but I can't even walk five minutes to a grocery store. I think, you know, there's so many families that live on these neighborhoods, and it's important for us to be able to at least have access to a place where we can get all our groceries at once, um, not just a small little convenience store slash market. You can't get everything there. You can't get your meats there. You can't get your eggs and your, your vegetables there. But I just think that there could be better uses for this site, and neglecting a grocery store component when it's really needed in the city, um, I think it's just irresponsible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, I, I just want to kind of make comments about your comments. Um, yes, I hear you regarding lack of grocery stores in Bellflower, since we lost Cedar Brothers on, um, Artesia and Lakewood, but unfortunately, fortunately, we are operating on a free-market economy, so it's really up to the business to come into Bellflower. We cannot really force them to, let's say, build a grocery on that pad, so to speak. We can't. It's, it's up to the market, it's up to the developer to do it. If they can attract grocery stores, that's well and good, so, uh, no, that's, you have your chance. Okay. All right, anyone else? All right, thank you so much. All right, Mr. Hamada, Mr. Sanchez, what's your pleasure?
I'll, uh, move to close the public hearing, if that's what...
All right. Second. Uh, motion by council member Hamada, seconded by council member Sanchez to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. All right.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Any final comments before we move on?
I, I think I have some final comments to make, first off. You know, there was conversation regarding, you know, the oversight or stepping out of boundaries and trying to manage or mitigate concerns that are in our community. I think that we're doing the right thing this evening by taking those steps. I don't think that it's an over, I don't think that we're overextending our boundaries or what have you. I think that we're, the community and the residents want us to find ways and solutions to mitigate these, uh, ongoing issues. Uh, and I, and unfortunately, this is one of those, um, solutions, and it's working, and, uh, so I'm just glad that we're, we're taking that step here this evening, so just want to mention that.
All right, thank you. Sir Hamada?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, again, uh, I think all the parties have worked really hard on this project. It's taken longer than we thought, and, uh, uh, again, uh, yeah, the projects of today are, 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 again, market-driven, and, uh, and all the cities are still competing for certain uses. And, uh, so, um, based on our studies, we have a great staff that has done a lot of research. They go to, again, ICSC, and deal with, again, all of the big boys and, and all the medium-sized ones, and even the smaller ones that, that are there, and, and they're working to try to, uh, you know, create a project to, that's workable in town, that has some opportunities. Yes, I understand that, uh, again, are we saturated with food? Are we saturated with gas stations? Again, I think it's, uh, what's still factored in is, is, um, uh, yes, there's still separation, there's, uh, uh, you know, travel patterns. Again, when you think about a gas station south, yeah, there's one to the east, and there's, yeah, to the west, but, uh, as you go down towards Bellflower, this will be probably the first one before you get to south, so, uh, and it's a, a different brand. Uh, seven eleven has chosen to move forward on, on, on serving, uh, uh, the public, uh, with, uh, you know, the gasoline opportunity. Uh, it's still around until we're told not to, uh, use gas-driven vehicles, but, um, um, again, uh, going back to the market and, uh, putting together something that, again, we feel that's going to work. That's what, we don't want to build something that's not going to work and, and stay empty, so, um, as I mentioned, uh, again, all the parties have worked hard. Uh, we got something that we can move forward on, uh, and, uh, we've, uh, we've, we've had those difficult discussions about, you know, you know, getting the right designs and, and circulation and, uh, and so on. I mentioned about the Gem Sonic. That's going to be a regional draw, so that's, that's a huge plus. So, um, um, we had a, we have a site here that's, that's decent enough in size and, and, and able to, uh, put more than just, uh, uh, you know, one big, uh, one big, you know, single user, so... It's, I think it's all about the opportunities and, and variety and so on, so, um, again, uh, as I mentioned, we're excited about this, and so I think we're at a point where, uh, uh, you know, what's being proposed is, uh, going to, uh, do well in this area, so... I'll leave it at that. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, thank you, cousin member Sanchez.
One thing I'd like to just highlight on the, um, on this development, similar to In-N-Out, and it was mentioned, the gathering space on the outdoor side of things. If staff can, can kind of go over the outdoor space that has been included in this designs.
I was about to say that.
Oh, sorry, I, I, sorry.
Yeah, if you show it again, the, uh, there's the, um, the outdoor, um, dining area on each of the pads.
Right.
So, um, for pads one, two, and three, there are outdoor, uh, outdoor dining area off of Bellflower Boulevard, as well as indoor dining, so...
And what's the square footage on each of those? Could you just mention them? I, I was looking for them quickly too, but you're faster than I am.
Specifically for the outdoor dining?
Yes, please.
Okay. So for pad one, there is a four hundred and sixty-four square foot outdoor dining area. For pad two, it's a hundred and eighty-five square feet, and for pad three, it's five hundred and forty-four square feet.
Perfect, thank you. And then, um, just briefly on the comment regarding the, the grocery store. Today, we, we threw the idea out there to the applicant, and we'll see, you know, it's on the applicant. I think like my colleagues have mentioned, it is a free market, and unfortunately, we can't dictate that type of, uh, use. That definitely would be an overstep on our end, uh, but, but hopefully the applicant heard a little bit of it and the desire for it, and who knows? We'll, you know, we'll leave it up to the applicant, so, um, with that, I'll conclude my comments, and if you like, I can, one of us can make a motion, or...
Let me just make one more comment before you make the motion.
One more, too.
I'll make an overall comment about, you know, um, that the, the impression that the city, um, can dictate what goes into certain areas, that's not correct. Uh, we, we encourage development, we can, we provide the environment for development to come, we provide the zoning, but we cannot tell developers to, you need to have grocery in this corner, you need to have car dealers in this corner, and this, we don't do that. Just like, uh, one of the serious misunderstandings is that the city builds homes. We don't build homes.
We can't.
We provide the environment so that homes can be built. We are not in the business of building, okay? So, I, I wish that we have the magic wand as a city, that we can say, "Oh, Kmart, can you reopen? Cedar Brothers, can you reopen?" We don't have that. Again, it, it's based on a free-market economy. That's how we survive. It's up to the developer to provide the building, to entice business to come to their development. That's how it works. And so our, our job is to provide the zoning, to provide the environment, so that these businesses will come to the city. All right, that's my comment. Mr. Hamada?
Just a quick one. Uh, staff, again, what was the size, the overall size of this building?
That building is, I believe, eight thousand...
Eight thousand.
Three hundred and fifty-six square feet.
All right, all right, that's, that's definitely on the smaller end.
Very small.
Yeah, all right. Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Sanchez, it's yours.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to, um, make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash sixty, a resolution approving conditional use permit case number CU twenty-one dash zero-three for three restaurants with drive-through components, a fuel station with an accessory of off-site alcohol sales for developing on lots that will measure less than one point five acres, and development review case number DR dash six dash two-one dash one-two-zero-eight to allow for the construction of five commercial buildings on properties located at one-seven-six-one-seven through one-seven-six-three-nine Bellflower Boulevard within the design for development for South Bellflower Commercial Area, also known as DFD, applicant, by the applicant Greg James of McKinley Malik Architects, uh, including the two conditions that were revised this evening.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four and thirty-three.
Okay.
I will second.
All right, motion by, uh, council member Sanchez, seconded by council member Hamada, uh, to approve resolution twenty-two dash six-zero as amended. Uh, roll call, please.
Council member Hamada?
Aye.
Council member Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Santina?
Aye. All right, Mr. Gold, congratulations. We look forward to the groundbreaking, whenever it's going to be. Please let us know. Okay, thank you so much. Oh, by the way, staff, thank you for, uh, putting the, some of the items on, on a flash drive. That was very helpful. I don't want to kill more trees, you know? Yeah, I know. Are they still here? Oh, we don't, we don't have Coram. We cannot transact business anymore. We cannot even approve the consent calendar now. All right, let the record reflect that Mayor Denton and council member Coops, uh, have rejoined the city council meeting. All right, mayor.
Well, I see you...
The floor is yours.
Thank you.
We worked hard on that last item, yes.
Well, I see you still have an audience.
Well, it was, it was a very exciting meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I got the easy stuff left, I think. Next night on the agenda is a consent calendar. Any recusals or conflicts first? Sonny, any recusals or conflicts?
Uh, no conflict.
Mr. Hamada?
Nothing, sir.
Coops, you got any recusals or conflicts?
No, I thought I did, but they said I'm off the hook.
You're off the hook. Okay. What about Mr. Sanchez down there?
No, no conflicts.
Well, I got a conflict on ten E and ten F regarding property conflicts within the five hundred feet. I want to recuse myself from ten F and ten E. Okay, any items want to be pulled for discussion? No? I would like to... Yeah, I guess I'm going to be the guy today.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
Item, uh, ten H regarding the Cannabis Educating Fund for the money coming out of that for the one thousand dollars towards the mayor's prayer breakfast that's put on by the Bellflower Ministerial Society, societies...
Association.
Association, I mean. Um, I would like to see that go concurrent annually, and if, uh, you colleagues would concur, I'd like to see that go continue.
I think you're looking to amend the recommendation to include in the annual budget in future.
Exactly.
Okay.
Or should we talk to them first in terms of how the mayor's prayer breakfast has been done? Maybe we can help them.
That's what this is.
I know.
So...
But in terms of the process, their process, because I think, uh, my understanding is they're not selling, they're not promoting as they used to be.
I think we have our direction. We could approve the item tonight, reach out to them, and if, if it looks like it's easier to do it this way, we could go through. As long as the council concurs with your recommendation, only thing I'm asking.
Okay, because I was talking to him, so, um, it just, I am, every year, and the mayor gets asked to try to round up money for the, the mayor's prayer breakfast and, and do, do certain things to help them out. Um, as we all know, that the city used to do the mayor's prayer breakfast... Um, as we all know, that the city used to do the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, and during the downturn of the economy, that we chose to, to let it go, and then they stepped up to continue it. Um, but whatever works to me is, if that's what we wanna do, we can pass this as it is, and, and the next mayor can work on it from here on out.
Well, no, I mean, I actually.
I'm okay.
Are you looking, I know, are you looking?
I'm just not gonna do it no more, I'm tired of it.
So, I think what the mayor's goal was, we'd wanna include this in the funding request that we go through annually on the budget.
We would like to be perpetual.
Correct, I get that.
Yeah.
So then they, it would just becomes like all the perpetual funding requests that we get. This would be one where they'd submit a letter and it'd be included in the budget process, if that's right.
Well, that's what I meant, it's had the submit for it.
I don't, I mean, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm okay with that, but my point here is, I, I don't see much promotion, um, the last couple of years as they used to be. Because if I remember correctly, when we used to have it at Sims Park, I mean, there were lines. People were buying tickets ahead of time.
I see.
So, and I, I just don't know what happened between then and now. I'm willing to help them, but I just wanna make sure that the help we're giving them is more than the $1,000.
Yeah.
That's all I'm getting at.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And, uh, I think when I had, was at Sims Park, it was on a shoestring budget, and it was pretty cheap and a lot of donated. Well, now it's at the High Dollar Main Center.
Yeah, I know.
And the times that we're having right now, as we all know.
Because honestly, I haven't seen any promotion on this.
Yeah, it's, we're open to whatever you want to.
So, I, I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with the recommendation, but I just want to have a conversation especially with the staff, uh, with them, to talk with them.
Well, this year is.
How we can help.
Well, this year's, this year's set, we give them a thousand, and then the next mayor can worry about it.
No, 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 I'm okay with your recommendation.
Okay, okay.
So you're amending this to make this an annual request from the Ministerial Association for Funding, for the, putting on the prayer breakfast for a thousand dollars, right? Okay. As long as you guys are good, I am.
What else you have, Ray?
That's it, that's all there is. Um, I'm the only one that got recusals, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Coops and, uh, second by Sanchez. Without objection, that'll be the order, with myself recused from 10F and 10E.
And modified.
And with, yeah, modified 10H as amended. Council reports, guys. Mr. Hamada, you wanna go first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of things quickly. Uh, on the 14th, I was able to attend, uh, the Gateway City's Cog Faith Summit on homelessness. And, uh, there were some presentations, and there was like a, a, um, you know, resource expo. Uh, this was in Paramount, and, uh, our own, uh, you know, Kingdom Causes Bellflower was there. Uh, Chrissy Padilla present, Berkey presented, uh, within a panel, and, uh, had some, uh, really great comments on, on, on situations and, uh, uh, her thoughts and, uh, you know, how, uh, again, everybody can, uh, work together, so, um, that went well. And then on the, uh, on the 15th, um, well, first off, I was appointed by the SCAG president to be on a subcommittee. Um, this is a racial equity and regional planning, so that combination. So, um, uh, we had, we had our first meeting, and, um, um, uh, we, we just kicked it off, and, uh, I'll be talking with staff, there, there was a video that they presented, and I just wanted to maybe run it by staff, and maybe it might, might be of something future to add, uh, for not, maybe, uh, just individual for us, or, or possibly for the public. So, um, uh, we'll have that discussion, so. And that's it, and, uh, um, looking forward to some more stuff with the, uh, uh, subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamada. Councilmember Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask that we adjourn this meeting for someone who's, uh, very important in our community, Helen Lean Thompson. She was born in Irtan, Iowa, on April 26, 1926, passed away September 9, 2022, at the age of 96 years old. Helen moved to Bellflower as a small child from Iowa with her parents, Bill and Olive Lean. She was a proud graduate of Excelsior High School, where she met her husband Wayne Thompson. She was an elementary school teacher for Bellflower Unified School District for over 30 years, and retired from Ernie Pile Elementary School. Helen was active in Bellflower community as a member of the Bellflower Kiwanis Club, the Masonic Lodge Presbyterian Church of Bellflower, brother-in church, and the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce. Helen was preceded in death by her husband Wayne, and leaves behind a loving family, including children Mark, Bill, Janet, and Anne, as well as countless friends who benefited greatly from knowing her. Our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the entire Thompson family. This family, who was so active in our town, Wayne Thompson, her husband, which I knew very well, uh, was the first principal for Somerset High School way back in the 60s. Uh, during World War II, he was a commander of a destroyer for US Navy. He was a teacher here in the school district. He had his own store at one time here in Bellflower, and then he continued to have an antique store up in Big Bear. And, uh, he was the president, uh, the manager of the Chamber of Commerce. So, this guy could do anything, and his wife supported him, and all this, that stuff. Wayne died here a couple of years ago, Helen just recently. But I just wanted to recognize part of what Bellflower, our town is built on the shoulders of the people like this, that took their time and their talents and put it to good use, and that's why I wanted to dedicate our evening, uh, adjournment to them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Councilmember Sanchez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanna, again, highlight the car show, I think was a phenomenal event, but, um, that's it. Thank you, uh, thank you for sharing that, uh, Mr. Coops. As you know, we all know, uh, we knew Ellen, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mayor Protem, Sunny Santinas?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanna thank, um, the Economic Development Department for, um, sponsoring the Implantadores program. Uh, thi- this is one of the, um, kind of, I don't think it's publicized as much as we need to. Uh, it, it's a training program for, uh, would-be business owners. If you want to own a business, uh, learn how to fund a business, how to grow a business, uh, you can learn this program, these things, so a program called, uh, Implantadores. And also, if you wanted to learn in English, uh, you can log into 37oaks.com. So, I would really encourage you, if you are thinking of going into business or want to grow your business, please take advantage of this program. And secondly, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, last meeting, I, um, I asked staff to have a presentation about the developments that we have in Bellflower. And Shovina, a, a constituent, asked me when it's gonna happen, so I'd like to remind staff we can do it one of your future meeting, meetings, uh, because we have so many things going on in the city, and we'd like to inform them in terms of these new developments. Just like tonight, we approved this major project, as far as I'm concerned, uh, it's something that, that's worth sharing. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santinas. And with that, I'd like to thank the Lions Club, they're the entity that actually puts on the car show with the City of Bellflower partnering, partnering with them. Um, they got through a nice event, brought a lot of people downtown. Um, apparently, no problems that I know of, no reporting, and I think any of us got problems the next day. Um, it went really well, and I just wanna give the Lions Club kudos. Anytime you put that many volunteers trying to do something that big, there's always a chance of something going south on you. But, uh, kudos for the Lions Club. Okay?
What, Larry Wehage, who was here earlier, um, really is the heart and soul of that event. When the Boulevard is completed at the end of the day, he'll pick up much of the trash. He comes by early Sunday morning, like 4:00 AM, and personally goes from one end of Boulevard all the way to the 91 Freeway, making sure every wrapper, every item is picked up. Boulevard actually is cleaner after he finishes it with them when we started with it. I just wanted to point that out. Larry just does an outstanding job making sure that we have no embarrassment on the Boulevard. And I just thought not many people know that, what he goes through. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. At this time, we're going to recess to close session. Uh, we, due to some, uh, scheduling conflicts, we had to put the closed session on the back end of the meeting, so this is pretty much it. So, Mr. Stewart, can you read our closed session items into the record?
Yeah, this is, uh, Conference of Legal Counsel, Threat of Litigation, and there's one case, and it involves a claim submitted by Luster Electric Company on September 21st.
Okay, does anybody have any recusals, conflicts? No? Okay. Is there anybody in attendance who would like to make pu- public comment on the closed session item? Not seeing any? Okay, we're gonna recess to closed session now. Are we recording? Okay. Okay, let the record reflect that we've reconvened from closed session, and there was no reportable action. And with that, I'm gonna call for adjournment at 10:15 in memory of Helen Thompson to our next regular meeting of the City of Bellflower City Council at 5:30 PM, Monday, October 10th, 22.